Have faced personal hardships and at times have felt like you were not measuring up to the standards you have set for yourself. Please believe that you are doing enough. Doing enough does not mean that you are perfect. It means you are doing the best you can with the resources that you have. Remember that we are all in this together. We appreciate you and will continue to provide support to you and your children. Carry with you until this upcoming school year that you inspire, you are enough, and you are definitely not alone. Thank you.
Thank you. I would ask that you join me now in a moment of silence. Thank you. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Still moved.
Motion by Mr. Levy.
Second.
Second by Mr. Holmes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries six oh. I will now move on to the public address to the board, which I gather is the reason quite a few of you are here. Normally, this is handled by Vice Chair Thompson, but in her absence, I'm going to begin the process. Because we have so many speakers tonight, and at this time, we have fifty-seven people signed up to speak either in person or by phone, I'll ask, I'm going to go ahead and call out the first five names and would ask that you be ready to speak such that we can minimize the amount of time that it takes between our speakers. Each speaker is limited to three minutes per speaker, and we ask that you abide by that. The clock will be set such that you can see the timer countdown. If you've spoken to the board numerous times and feel like your voice has been heard and you choose to withdraw from your list on the, your name on the list, we'll understand that as well. But we do want to hear you all and hope that you will bear with us for the next four hours because that's the predicted time it will take. Our first five speakers, Ariadne Degar, Beth Ann Pratt, Margus Swears, okay, Russ Van Sant, and Peggy Smetana.
And if you guys can just say your name when you come up to the podium so we don't forget you.
Good evening, board members. My name is Ariadne Degar. Please don't forget me. I have spoken with you a couple of times. Tonight, we'll make a few, and next time, we'll make several. I feel that I've been heard, but I don't know that I've been listened to. I would like to start by saying that immediately following the last board meeting, anyone who happens to receive the publication, I was quoted in the Republican Newsletter as saying something that agreed with the standpoint that they were conveying, and I would just like to say, while I was not misquoted, I was misrepresented. It was taken out of context, so I would just like to let you know that should you be looking at that. I am here to talk about Southern Pines Land and Housing Trust and West Southern Pines for the third time. You've all heard how much it means to me and my family, numerous other families. I watched a movie last night in the Heights. I'm sure many of you have seen it. It was written by a childhood friend, and the music was great and the dancing was great, but the deeper point was the gentrification is a real thing. And whether you, sorry, whether you think it's because of finances and economics and you don't like the way this part of town looks and you want to take the highest bid so that you can beautify it and build more big, beautiful houses, you also need to respect the people that helped build that town. And when you erase a culture, it hurts the American culture as a whole because everyone's culture made up that greater culture. We are all Americans. We are all proud. We are all patriots, and we all deserve to have our cultures preserved. So I understand that you may be entertaining higher bids, but I need you to understand what taking that higher bid over doing what's right with a bid that's comparable, it may not be quite as high as the other, but rather than working with the people, that you are doing irreparable damage. And you may be excited that your property value goes up. You may be excited that you have more golf resorts than before. But who are you erasing? If you look in your past, who would you erase and say, we'd be better off without them? So I beg you to please entertain the land trust's offer and to please work with them. Thank you.
Thank you. Beth Ann Pratt.
Good evening. Each of you took an oath to uphold federal and state laws. You cannot appropriately govern our schools, determine if policies are constitutional and lawful, or ensure that the administration complies with the laws if you yourself are ignorant of these various documents. North Carolina guarantees that every child has a right to a sound, basic education. This term is defined in the North Carolina Supreme Court as a sufficient abilities to read, write, speak English, sufficient knowledge of fundamental math, physical science, geography, history, basic economics, and political science. Evidence shows that Moore County schools do not provide such an education to all students since over forty percent of the students are not proficient in math, reading, or English Language Arts. Graduation rates are basically meaningless since there's no quantitative measurement of competency for graduation. The board's focus must be on spending time and providing teachers the tools and the knowledge to make certain that all students master the foundational skills. Your job, according to the North Carolina State Statute, is to provide students with this education. Every single decision you make should be with that objective in mind. But more importantly, the litmus test is, is what you're doing constitutional. I don't know how many of you have actually read the United States Constitution and the North Carolina Constitution, but at any, like, we all have opinions on critical race theory. We all have opinions on everything. Opinions are one thing, but we govern by our Constitution. We are a republic. We are not a democracy. And so at the end of the day, when you listen to everybody's comments, you go back to say, is it constitutional? So some of us tonight are reading parts of the North Carolina Constitution because I doubt if many of you have even read it. I am going to start with just the preamble and Article One, one part. "We, the people of the state of North Carolina, grateful to Almighty God, the sovereign ruler of nations, for the preservation of the American Union and the existence of our civil, political, and religious liberties. We acknowledge our dependence upon Him for our continuance of blessings and security thereof for the better government of this state ordained and established this Constitution." Article One, Declaration of Rights. That there, that the great general and essential principles of liberty and free government may be recognized and established, and that the relations of this state to the Union and the government of the United States and those people may be defined and affirmed, we do declare the following. And tonight, throughout the fifty-two-whatever people who are presenting, you'll hear parts of the North Carolina Constitution related to education and the decisions that you need to make.
Thank you. Margaret. Pronounce your last name again.
Swears.
Swears.
It's okay. I'm going to read Section, Article One, Section One, the Equality and Rights of Persons. We all hold it to be self-evident that persons are created equal by their Creator among those life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. America is made up of imperfect people, but our nation has embraced good things, certainly Martin Luther King Jr.'s dream not to judge people by the color of their skin, which is just an organ, but by the contents of their character. If this board teaches staff or students to view everything through the context of their skin color, that's racism. It will destroy his dream and progress our, and all the progress that our country has made. So we're asking you, the board and teachers, to do their job, hold the superintendent accountable. The curriculum standards, the social studies curriculum standards are very vague. They don't help us understand anything that's being taught. The glossary was even plagiarized in the beginning. We need to, again, provide a sound, basic education, and inserting these divisive political propaganda is only going to, and also mandating the students to wearing masks will make very unlawful decisions and violate our rights. Moore County Board, we need to take immediate action to prohibit any students or others to be taught that one race or one sex is superior, that we are made to feel, or students made to feel that they are accountable for past ancestors, or label them as oppressed or oppressors. So failure to do this is not abiding by Article One, Section One. Section Two, sovereignty of the people. All political people are vested in and derived from the people, all political power. All government of right originates from the people. These, our American schools are under attack by Marxist propaganda. We don't want you, we've told you, we don't want the Panorama platform. We don't want Castle Professional Development. We don't want these social studies standards. It's going to indoctrinate our schools. It's open up to controlling them as well. So does any school board member here believe that the color of a student's skin really determines their abilities? We only have a disparity in our schools when we have one A-ranked school and five D schools. So focus on that, or else it's almost a form of child abuse. And we're thinking about the poor math grades across the country, and we have a literacy problem across our country. Please think about defunding this critical race theory. Thank you. And take the mask to a filter.
Thank you. Mr. Van Sant.
Sir, I might ask that you just leave your poster there at your feet such that you don't block other people. Thank you.
Friends and neighbors, good to be here with you. I'm going to read from the North Carolina State Constitution, Section Three, Internal Government of the State. The people of this state have the inherent sole and exclusive right of regulating the internal government and police thereof, and of altering or abolishing their constitution and form of government whenever it may be necessary to their safety and happiness. But every such right shall be exercised in pursuance of law and consistently with the Constitution of the United States. Separate item in a paragraph. The Moore County School Board, nor the state school board, have the authority or power to construct circular content, curricular content, based on a theory that inherently defies every value and right of Americans. The verbiage used with the new social studies objectives and content in the crosswalk documents exhibits Marxist ideology and critical race theory doctrine. The local schools, school board, has complete control over this matter. We ask that you establish a policy to ensure that students or staff will not be taught that one race or one sex is superior, be taught or made to feel that they are accountable for the past actions of their race or sex, or be labeled as either oppressed or oppressive by virtue of the race or sex. If the board fails to act, then you are in direct violation of the North Carolina State Constitution, Article One, Section Three. Section Four, secession prohibited. This state shall never remain a member of the American Union. North Carolina shall always be part of the American Union. The Admissions Clause required states to follow the principles of the Declaration of Independence and the Constitution. The State Board of Education is not an elected body and is forbidden to create any policy that violates existing laws or the Constitution. This board must create a declaration that denounces critical race theory, the sixteen-nineteen project, or any content that incorporates like doctrine. You have complete authority over this matter. If the board fails to act, then you are in direct violation of the North Carolina State Constitution, Article One, Section Four. Allegiance to the United States. Every citizen of the state owes paramount allegiance to the Constitution and government of the United States, and no law or ordinance of the state in contravention or subversion thereof can have any binding force. Each of us here tonight are privileged because we live in America. Many men and women gave their lives for our freedoms. We owe paramount allegiance to this republic. The new local studies standard and equity training are subversive and fail to provide any educational value. Mr. Levy reported to the board that the crosswalk document does not give the primary students the basic building blocks to learn about a republic. Rather, they are learning about current left-leaning people, not historical figures. Every place that you turn, this becomes a political curriculum that is in opposition to the United States Constitution, North Carolina Constitution.
Thank you, Mr. Van Sant. Ms. Smetana. And if the next five speakers will come forward, Steve Woodward, Holly Frank, Pauline Bruno, Troy Pickens, and Vanessa Marselli.
Our government was constructed to have those living closest to the citizens to have the most control. Numerous times, some board members' comments inferred that the local school board has no authority or power over the matters of our schools, but this is false. The state school board cannot, or Board of Election, cannot subject local school boards or force the students to be subject to instruction that violates the Constitution and established laws. The local school boards need, local school board needs to take a stand and take action. I'd like to reassert that that the school board should ensure that our students and staff will not be taught that one race or sex is better than another, taught or made to feel that they are accountable for past actions of their race or sex, and be labeled as either oppressed or oppressive by virtue of their race and sex. And it seems like all citizens have the right to assemble and petition the board for redress of grievances. And there was some talk about that. Seems like some individuals on the board want to eliminate opposition to their agenda. The board and all the employees of Moore County Schools, use our tax dollars. We're concerned that Moore County School Board Policy thirteen-fifteen restricts free, restricts free and open access, free and open discussion, rather, with the school The policy cites its authority, this policy cites its, cites its authority for this policy, but it ignores the historical premise and statutes requiring the board to be held accountable to the people. We request that the school board hold town hall meetings to openly discuss subjects. It seems like some board meetings don't want meaningful discussions with the public. And I'd like to have the board have dialogue, all right? And maybe it would be a better idea, instead of having the public comment session before this meeting, to have it at before, I know you had a work session today, where maybe you already decided what you're going to do, but I think it'd be better to have our comments first and then have your open board meeting, open board, no, your close board meeting or your work sessions afterwards. Thank you very much.
Mr. Woodward.
Good evening. Steve Woodward from Pinehurst. I'm on the clock, but I am here to tell all of you that your time is up. The time has come to quit pretending that shiny new schools can detract from the reality that public education and American values are under assault as never before. The time has come to flatly reject standards for teaching America's history handed down by a state board of education dominated by a vowed Marxist led by board appointee James Ford. The left says we're running out of time to save the planet from climate change, but I'm here to tell you that the time is of the essence to save our nation from racial climate change. The heat is on to embrace CRT, Constant Racial Tension in the Classroom. And then there's SEL, Social Emotional Leveraging of Young Minds. I examined the new so-called standards being rushed into place briefly, but long enough to find some landmines. Capitalism uplifts some people, but only at the expense of others. Ours is a history defined not by resolute freedom, but by intolerance, xenophobia, and disenfranchisement, from which there can be no redemption. Systemic oppression crushes the identities of women, immigrants, and black Americans. Jesus Christ said, "Accept me as Savior of the world; then you will know the truth, and the truth will set you free." Today, many Americans cynically ask, what is truth? These cynics gladly shun the notion of freedom as it, if it advances their goal of hijacking the truth. There is no truth. There is only the narrative. Consider myriad false narratives to enforce mask-wearing by children, a travesty. What does the narrative say? Systemic racism is the story of the United States of America. We are a nation measured by two-hundred-and-forty-five irredeemable years, but time has run out on this false narrative. Our children deserve to know in every fiber of their beings that the American story unfolds in such a way that slavery and racism never were going to survive, never had a chance. Segregation's days were numbered from the start in our land. Since we have seen so many statues come down, let's find room for a new one honoring North Carolina's civil rights warrior Clarence Henderson. Clarence intuitively knew he would not be held back because his blue-collar father told him so. Clarence did not need someone to remind him that black lives matter. It wasn't BLM that gave him the will to walk into Woolworth's in nineteen sixty. He just wanted a BLT and a Pepsi at the lunch counter. And from there, he went forward to feast at the table of American capitalism and liberty. Our great American story includes a glorious chapter detailing how our founding fathers, who though flawed because they were human, formed a nation capable of advancing beyond the social norms of their times. A proper education would engrain this achievement in every student. Thank you.
Ms. Frank.
Hi, I'm Holly Frank. This is my second time to address you all, so totally fine if we're not that familiar with you guys, or if you're not that familiar with me, excuse me. But I wanted to, the last time that I spoke before you was the day that you voted on Mr. Levy's proposal to ban CRT from Moore County schools. And I just wanted to give you some feedback on what the, those of you that voted nay on that proposal, like, what that feedback has come back to look like in society and with the parents. So a lot of the reasons that you gave did not have, like, substantiation behind them, and a lot of them were logical fallacies. So I just want you to know that since then, what's happening on the playgrounds and when we do, like, our birthday parties and what all the parents are talking about, we're pulling, we're pulling our kids out of the school because we knew that that was the chance to protect Moore County from critical race theory and the new social studies standards. And Ms. Caldwell, you mentioned that you didn't feel like we needed to have Mr. Levy's thing passed because it wasn't in the schools, but we all knew that the state was passing it down and that the Department of Instruction was going to be training teachers on it, like, in the next few weeks. We all knew that it was coming, but you voted nay on it, and so now Moore County's not protected from it. And Ms. Carter, you gave two logical fallacies in your argument against it. You said, what are we going to do if we don't include critical race theory? Are we now not going to listen to, like, the theory of relativity or the theory of evolution? I was shocked to hear you say that because I know that you've put in a lot at Pinecrest High School, and even though I'm relatively new to the community and I only have elementary school students, I know that you're well-liked in the community. So I was super shocked to hear that that would be your argument against it, that those two things that have standard, that have stood the test of time, that we would, that we would ever compare that to critical race theory, which is something brand-new and is causing such division. It surprised me also when I was telling some girlfriends at work about it, and they said that you were the debate coach at Pinecrest High School. But don't you worry because I took up for you. And I said, there's no way that she was the debate coach at Pinecrest High School and use logical fallacies like that. And I would never want to call anybody unintelligent, especially a fellow female leader, but I was shocked that that was your argument. And so, and Mr. Grimesy, the stuff that you say about the reasons that you say no to things, like, it's like the one-liners that pageant queens give, and I'm not trying to be rude to you or disrespectful to you. I'm not. I'm not at all. Those girls are trained very well. But what I'm saying is, like, they don't have, like, they're not powerful. They're not reasonable. It's not something that you can actually grind your teeth into and that plays out in the real world. And Mr. Dennison, I really appreciate everything that you bring to the table as well, but when one of the other board members told you that he had evidence that critical race theory was already being taught in our schools, which we, the parents, know is true, and he asked you if he could provide it to you and you would change your mind, you stuttered about it, and he talked about it.
Thank you, Ms. Frank. Next up, Pauline Bruno.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Pauline Bruno, and I live in Pinehurst. I would like to speak tonight on Panorama and why I am so against it. Panorama is teacher development, a survey platform, and a very invasive plan into the minds of our children. It is digitally tracked and follows our students forever and always. Members of the school board, are you truly comfortable with funding this outright indoctrination of our children? Have you actually gone to their website and read their mission statement? It seems to me that you do not realize that you have the power to make decisions and sit here because it is the people sitting back here who gave you that power. Do you also realize that we are not happy with your performance? According to the pilot in News and Observer, September fifth, two thousand nineteen, Moore County Schools' math proficiency is forty-four percent. How do we teach our students to compete in a global world with a score that doesn't even reach half? Our reading proficiency is fifty-two percent. Our overall testing rank is a hundred-and-twenty-five out of two, a hundred-and-twenty-six out of two-hundred-and-ninety in this state. Are you kidding? This is Moore County. We cannot allow so many students to graduate who are barely capable to read and to do basic math. How many of our students are going to college and taking remedial classes in math, in reading, or both? They are sitting in a class with the same content that they should have learned in school. Think about the amount of time and think about the amount of money that is being wasted. We have dire issues in front of us. Why would you ever bother with this panorama? Teach our children. Stop the nonsense.
Thank you, Mr. Pickens. Mr. Pickens, I would ask that you hold your applause. I know that you're enthusiastic, but Mr. Pickens couldn't even hear his name called. Excuse me.
Freedom of speech.
Ms. Harmon, I think it might be necessary, consider this a first warning. This is a business meeting, first of all. Public comment is more than welcome, but it is a business meeting. I've asked that you please hold your applause. Mr. Pickens could not hear his name called because we are on a timely basis tonight and trying to move quickly through speakers to give every one of you a chance to speak. I ask that you cooperate. Mr. Pickens, next.
All right. Thank you very much. I'm just going to read from the North Carolina State Constitution, Article Nine, Concerning Education, Section One, Education Encouraged. Religion, morality, and knowledge being necessary to good government, and the happiness of mankind, schools, libraries, and the means of education shall forever be encouraged. The North Carolina law explicitly states that what local school boards should encourage. It is important to remember that educating students is a partnership between the school and the parents. The Moore County School Board appears to make an effort to exclude parents from being an active partner in their child's education. The MCS does not have a consistent and transparent way to communicate with parents. They fail to educate parents on their rights and overstep their authority. The MCS fails to create an environment in schools conducive for parental involvement, inclusive of all stakeholders, curriculum committees, and other advisory groups. We ask the school board to provide ways for community and parental input into every aspect of the MCS. These schools belong to us, the taxpayers. Instead of encouraging social, emotional, learning surveys and the ideas that America is inherently racist, the board should follow the North Carolina statutes and encourage any public school teacher or administrator to read or post in public, any public school building, classroom, or even excerpts of portions of writings, documents, and records that reflect the history of the United States, including but not limited to the preamble of the North Carolina Constitution, Declaration of Independence, United States Constitution, Mayflower Compact, National Model, National Anthem, Pledge of Allegiance, the writing speeches, documents, and proclamation of the founding fathers, and the President of the United States, Decisions of the Supreme Court of the United Carolina Constitution, Declaration of Independence, United States Constitution, Mayflower Compact, National Model, National Anthem, Pledge of Allegiance, the writing speeches, documents, and proclamations of the founding fathers, and the Presidents of the United States, Decisions of the Supreme Court of the United States, Acts of Congress in the United States, including the published text of the Congressional Record. The State Board recommended programs for the Memorial Day and Veterans Day that enable students to gain a better understanding of the meaning and importance of our sacrifices of our military. Moore County is the home of families who sacrifice for this great nation. It is a slap in the face to the students who have parents or relatives in the military to not learn the history of this great nation. We demand that a Moore County school encourages religion, morality, and knowledge necessary to be patriots. The Moore County School Board needs to be proactive and close loopholes for indoctrination, or it will happen. The Moore County School Board needs to focus on literacy and mathematics. The Moore County schools have overstepped their boundaries of authority and power. We ask that you return to your original purpose. If you do not, you are in violation of the North Carolina Constitution, Article 9. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Marzelli, again, I ask you to hold your applause. If our next five speakers would come forward, A.J. Marzelli, Jared Dent, Jimmy Pratt, Nancy Ellis, and Vincent Gordon.
Can I bring my slides to the podium, then?
Yeah, but I don't want you to block us.
Good evening. First, I would like to thank the board for passing the resolution to delay the new social studies standards implementation. This is a victory for our children. However, delaying is not enough. We must reject the new social studies standards altogether. These standards are laced with critical race theory, social-emotional learning, and inaccurate anti-American propaganda. The Fordham Institute graded the new social studies standards for North Carolina and gave them an F for historical content and a D minus for civics. We can do better. My question for you is, have you read the unpacking documents? Does anything in there concern you? Not only what is in these documents, but what is lacking in these documents, particularly in the 6 through 12 American History section? As a Moore County voter and taxpayer, it sure as heck concerns me. Some of the rhetoric in the unpacking documents have been tamped down, however, it still does not benefit our children. It is still clearly politically charged, divisive, and packed with leftist agenda. American history must be taught in an age-appropriate progression, and it must start out with a basic love and understanding for our great country. We expect you, as a school board, to enforce teaching that is based on facts and American values that every student must be taught. Secondly, I'd like to touch on the issue of masks for the upcoming school year. Enough is enough. Children all over our county are enjoying their summers, hanging out with family and friends, playing at the pool, eating at restaurants, hanging out in large crowds, going to sporting events, out on vacation, et cetera, and they are doing it all without wearing masks. How do I know? I see it every single day, all over our county and all over our state. And the very few that I do still see wearing masks, that is their choice, and that is exactly how it should be in our schools, a choice. We have enough data to understand that masks are not only harmful to our children, they do little to prevent the spread of COVID in the classrooms. Even Fauci said masks don't work. If teachers want to be protected from COVID, they have had ample time to get vaccinated. To play into the theater of mask-wearing again for the coming school year would be an absolute joke. A research center in Florida just recently conducted a study on face masks of six children and found a whopping 21 pathogenic bacteria present on those face masks. Many of those pathogens are known to cause illnesses like pneumonia, bloodstream infections, meningitis, UTI, strep throat, tuberculosis, and even sepsis. Sounds pretty accurate to me considering daily my children would bring home their masks and hand them to me, and they would be completely soiled, dirty, wet, and smelly and covered in mysterious substances and fluids. It is disgusting and completely unnecessary. Please stop forcing our children to wear Petri dishes on their face and let them breathe fresh air, especially when, per the CDC statistics, COVID children aged 5 to 18 have a 99.9995% chance of survival. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Marzelli.
So obviously, we're not too happy with you guys, otherwise we wouldn't be here, and obviously you need to start getting bigger venues because this is not going to stop. You are not doing enough to combat the implementation of the new social studies curriculum from our schools. In fact, you're attempting to make it worse. The Moore County Schools' Kindergarten Social Studies Pacing Guide is embarrassing if you believe five- and six-year-olds can grasp concepts like, and I quote, "identifying cultural practices in local communities and around the world, or to summarize stories of positive character traits through the lens of empathy, resilience, and respect to contribute to the community." Now, these by themselves don't sound all that bad, and I can agree with that. However, it is the exact same language that is littered in the CRT Marxist social activism that is being proliferated throughout our country and this county, whether you want to believe it or not. You are not paid to turn our children into activists. None of this is age-appropriate material. It is instead a way to promote the social activist thinking in our children. This language is littered throughout all of this. We have over 200 years of examples of American exceptionalism, and they are clueless about who Dr. Joseph Warren was and his place in history. Of course, that is why you guys leave it so vague and continue to not publish any of these documents, which we would like published, as well as any of these panorama surveys that are just utterly disgusting and divisive. You must not approve to teach this new curriculum that is infected with this racist Marxist anti-American hate. As was stated before, the Fordham Institute gave the state, the North Carolina State's social studies curriculum an F on historical content and a D minus for civics. An F and a D minus in history and civics. That is disgusting. What are you guys doing? This is unacceptable. You'll have your chance, calm down. Let that go.
I'm sorry.
To bring about, so, the only thing you and your colleagues are leaving out of the teaching, which I'm sure he'll tell you all about here in a minute, are the two types of people to help bring about communism in this country are the unwitting agents and useful idiots. Which ones are you guys? You have no more excuses to allow this into our system. If Martin Luther King Jr.'s right-hand man, Wyatt T. Walker, warned of the dangers of this kind of teaching in 2015, then we need to quickly and drastically change our efforts. Mr. Levy, you spoke before in the closed session, you were 100% right about your camel or elephant analogy. I don't know, you could use a frog one as well about how to keep it in a boiling pot. But anyway, I agree. You start letting in a little bit of this at a time, and eventually the entire beast will enter. So please, continue the good work. And then also, consider maybe getting cameras in our classrooms so we can actually know what's going on in the classrooms.
Mr. Pratt, or, it's actually Mr. Pratt's turn, I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry, I haven't, it's Mr. Dent's term. I'm so sorry.
I'm here again to discuss children and masks in the school system. In June, Betsy Tilson, NCDHHS State Health Director, stated that there were four metrics that would be used for criteria regarding the issue. The first was that COVID rates were low. However, she gave no firm rate figure as a metric and gave no indication if this was a state or local rate. Second, she stated that more research on COVID-19's impact on children was needed. She once again gave no timeframe for any research to be assessed by. Next, she tied removing masks in school to vaccination status. Data from that time showed that 19% of children ages 12 through 19 had been vaccinated. Ms. Tilson did not give any figure that would indicate what percentage of children in the 12 to 19 age group would need to be vaccinated for masks to be made optional. Given that as of June, 45% of adults in North Carolina remain unvaccinated. Teen vaccination figures vary from 10.7% to 25% based on what I was reading. And should the vaccine be approved in the younger age group, it will likely be even lower. Statistics from North Carolina in June showed that there was a 0% death rate in children up to 17. Let me repeat, a 0% death rate. May's data showed less than 50 children infected with the virus. Recent studies from the United Kingdom that will be submitted to the Joint Committee on Vaccination and Immunization, the Department of Health and the World Health Organization, found that children face an extremely low, 1 in 500,000 risk of dying from coronavirus. In England, just 25 under-18s have died from COVID, which equates to 2 in a million, experts said. Young people with pre-existing medical conditions such as heart disease and cancer and severe disability, including cerebral palsy and autism, have the higher chance of becoming seriously ill from the virus. More than 75% of the children who had died had chronic conditions, while 2/3 had more than one underlying condition, and 60% had life-limiting conditions. But the scientists from three top British universities said that this risk is no higher than the risk from influenza. So if we didn't have mandatory masks for influenza, why are we mandating masks for coronavirus? As I've stated before, this issue of masks on children cannot be looked at strictly from a COVID viewpoint. Is there any consideration for the students' mental health, particularly in the very young children who are transitioning to a new environment for the first time? Is there any consideration for the need for young children to learn phonics and reading? Moore County has an average reading proficiency score of 53%, and it's likely this data was prior to the pandemic. The state of South Carolina passed a law banning school districts from requiring masks. In June, the Harnett County Board voted, school board voted, to make masks optional. And what of the parents who have been given no clear metrics and no clear dates by the state for when masks will become optional? What of the parents who want their children to be able to learn phonics correctly and not fall behind in reading, or have a normal transition to school, such as those of children in private schools or in South Carolina? Our government has failed to provide any information to allow them to make an informed decision for their children.
Thank you, Mr. Dent. Mr. Pratt.
I'm here tonight to break through black code of silence. Carter Wilson said, "The purpose of an education is to teach a child to think and do for themselves." Right now, a significant portion of the black community and black students believe that the Republican Party fought on its side of the conspiracy. This political race indoctrination is deep, that deep in our community, and it's sinister. And the reason it's that way is to create a permanent black underclass to milk for votes and profit. From the time a black child is born, that is, if he can get born, they are saddled with racism and the political class rise them. Dr. King spoke of this group that's behind this in our community. Dr. King writes that in the middle, Dr. King writes, "I stand in the middle of two opposing forces in the black community. One, a force of complacency made up in part of Negroes who are drained of self-respect and a sense of somebodyness by a few middle-class Negroes who, because of a degree of academic and economic security, and because in some ways they profit by surrogation, have become insensitive to the problem of the masses." If you want to teach a black kid, a black child, every school board needs to recognize and understand the environment they are coming from. I, myself, I am a real victim of racism. I fought racism in the streets, in the military, through the government, through the legislature, and in the courts. I see racism different than defined by the political class and the news media. CRT means to me complicity race theory, and that is what should be taught. And they shouldn't mind because they have no problem calling me Uncle Tom, Jambo, or sellout. History, when there's no agenda, is, we'll recognize all who contribute. In the 1950s, a 15-year-old black girl named Claudette Coven did the same thing that Rosa Parks on the same bus line before Rosa Parks did hers. It was Claudette Coven case that went to the Supreme Court and ended surrogation on the Montgomery buses. But she was not good enough to spark a movement. Her family was poor and had an outhouse. Because of complicity, they robbed her of her self-respect and her sense of somebodyness, she moved to North Carolina and became a prostitute. Some 70 years later, that same complicity was at work here in Moore County in the 1980s. A discrimination lawsuit by two black Moore County correctional officers against the Moore County prison led to lawsuits against the most powerful Klan group in America. Those lawsuits brought about the first promotion for blacks in state government, and it brought down the biggest Klan in America. The Klan part was reported by every news organization in America and a few overseas. But those who write the first draft of history decided that history cannot record what went on at the Moore County prison. This complicity racism ignored what happened, and Moore County prisons, what went on there, was removed from history.
Thank you, Mr. Pratt. Ms. Ellis.
I speak in support of the purchase by the Southern Pines Land and Housing Trust of the Southern Pines Primary School site. My reasons include the following. When appraised, the Aberdeen Elementary School and Southern Pines Primary School were appraised by the school board's own appraiser at approximately the same value, thereby providing a sound basis upon which to substantiate the Southern Pines Primary School site's fair market value. The amount being offered by the trust matches or exceeds what Moore County schools will receive from the final bid on the Aberdeen Elementary School. The area of West Southern Pines has long been denied the rights and services afforded to other adjacent and surrounding areas. The sale of the Southern Pines Primary School site to the trust presents an ideal opportunity to make it possible for West Southern Pines to revitalize itself. The sale of the Southern Pines Primary School to the trust would exhibit wise stewardship of Moore County system assets and demonstrate a spirit of cooperation and long-term gain. The purpose of the Southern Pines, the purchase of the Southern Pines Primary School by the trust would make the sale an easy one, while also freeing the school board of deferred maintenance or dealing with land parcels. The purchase of the Southern Pines Primary School by the trust would foster benefits for our entire community. The sale would increase economic prosperity of West Southern Pines and Moore County residents. The sale would increase the availability of enriching cultural experiences. The sale would honor the intent of the original purchases of the property decades ago. The sale would afford increased exposure to and appreciation of African-American history. The sale would forge bonds of relationship throughout disparate groups. Members of the Moore County School Board, please vote in support of the trust purchase of the Southern Pines Primary School. Thank you.
Thank you. Before Mr. Gordon begins, I'll ask our next five speakers to come forward. Ashley Corsino, Martez Norris, Lori Rodenberger, Ken Carlson, and Vic Allen. Mr. Gordon.
Vincent Gordon, Southern Pines Land and Housing Trust. Dr. Grimsley, Madam President, members of the board. I want to begin by thanking numerous supporters who not only have given their time but money with an account that started with actually $267 to raise over half a million dollars. This is a grassroots effort that is now supported by citizens, churches, institutions across the county with varying ethnic and socioeconomic backgrounds that came together in one cause to lift up one community and that it help itself in this county. And I wanted to kind of repeat that it help itself. That's kind of what we want it to do. Donations ranged from $0.75 to $150,000 with the same sweat and determination when $6,000 had been raised in 1924, and hundreds of thousands of dollars raised to help pay for a gymnasium, and we found that we have also helped pay for the Blanchard Park. So pretty much the entire parcel. This community is now, has many supported from West Southern Pines and from the surrounding community, and they feel like they're vested at this point in time. Because of our fundraising, is still moving in an upward trend, especially over the past several weeks, we are, we have increased our offer from 458, and I know you realize that we've reached to $525,000. And that's 1417 acres. This is more than what the Aberdeen primary sold for in the open bid process, which was one of the measures that we determined that we should actually consider as fair market value. Anything less than 17 acres, we need the opportunity to discuss. When making the decision to accept $525,000 versus any more than that $525,000, because that more might not get you what you really are looking for. So some of the things we need to consider. First of all, Arianna, I think the guard made an excellent presentation of what she mentioned as far as what can happen with gentrification. We need to consider that. Let's not forget what she just mentioned and what she said. Don't forget her. Appraised value was based on making, being a free and clear of all encumbrances. So that, you got to remember, that $685,000 that was put up there was free and clear of all encumbrances. That's not what would occur. Any buyer will require you to pay real estate taxes, that'd be $18,000 or more, that you got to consider, that you got to come out your pocket and pay. We can accept the title with the restrictions. We will buy, will someone else who comes in build affordable housing for teachers or housing teachers can't afford. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Corsino, I would ask again that you please hold your applause.
Hi. I just wanted to come today first to advocate for the sale of the Leon Trust, which I know a couple people have already spoken about, but I honestly think the right thing to do would be sell it to them for $1. Sell it to them for $1 and let all of their money that they've raised so that they can start their programs. Now, there is a place that is in our county called the Artist League of the Sand Hills, and I work there, and I get a very low, we all get a low rate for our students. and I work there, and I get a very low, we all get a low rate for our, our studio space because the city of Aberdeen rents the space to us for one dollar a year. And it adds so much to the community. So to have the idea that more arts programs and enrichment programs could be bought to that space, um, you know, is just, I'm just dreaming of, you know, the food trucks that are going to be parked outside. I can already smell them. And, you know, I want to sign my kids up for the cooking classes. I have a friend who would be able to do the sewing classes. So, you know, it's like, let's just get it into motion. You know, you guys all talk so much about loving history. I love history too. I think historic preservation is really beautiful. I actually attended an arts program growing up in my hometown that was a repurposed high school that they used for art spaces, and now they have concerts there that they have a partnership with a local tavern and they do. You know, I bought tickets for Super Triumph two years ago with my dad for a hundred dollars. You know, I mean, this is something that we can keep the ball rolling with all these ideas, but it starts with, uh, you know, first of all, like I said, the right thing to do would be sell it to them for one dollar. But if you're not going to do that, then I would think they should do it for the offer that's on the table right now. And then, number two, keep the military liaison. And I think that should be a fully funded position. I think that should be something that somebody, you know, that we increase funds for. So I did some artwork for you guys too, to kind of just drive my points home.
These person-specific or just generic?
They're generic. You can pass them around. Didn't even read it.
Sorry.
You didn't even read it.
I looked at the front. I will, I will study it.
Oh, I thought we were going to get wonderful.
Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
We'll pass it around.
Sure, yeah.
Maybe the chair can, can flash it.
This one does say, "Save West Southern Pines Local History," or "Our Military Liaison," or "West Southern Pines."
It says, well, okay, the front is, "Don't Tread on Me."
Yeah. Sell to the Southern Pines Land Trust for one dollar.
So don't tread on me, don't tread on military liaison, and don't tread on West Southern Pines.
And then four more dreaming. Uh, this one is, "Come and Take It." Moore County Citizens for Public Health and Education. Come and Take It. My history books, Knowledge is Power, with a list of books, Systemic Racism, Tolerance, Human Beliefs, Feminist, One Thousand and One Feminist Theories, CRT is Real, Rights Versus Alternative Rights, Tact Versus Tactics, Anti-Racism is Pro Public Health. Thank you.
All right, our next speaker, Martez Norris.
Hello, thank you very much. And I am against critical race theory. I was brought up, as you can tell by my accent, I was not born in North Carolina nor Alabama. I was born overseas under socialism. And you don't know how much it permeates right up to the everyday in your life, what can happen. So I am totally against it. One thing that I can just reach home from the Lieutenant Governor, Mike Robinson, that he is against it. He's against it because he said, "We need to teach our children how to think and not what to think." Also, that he has noted that the critical race theory is being crafted to those on the radical left with the explicit agenda of being divisive, promoting left-wing ideology, and indoctrinating our students within public schools. And I take it back to children. And I seen what goes on overseas. I have family over there, and when I go and we talk about the way it was going on in this country, and now it's permeating, trickling down in the local schools, I find it disgusting. Moreover, we do need religious liberty. If you think for a moment that we will not become eventually like the Soviet Union, what was then the Soviet Union, or what is going on in China, then I suggest you think twice. As a matter of fact, part of Panorama and Cassell, it actually, the persons who started it, they got investments from China. So if you think they're not going, the Chinese are not going to tell us how to invest in our country, think twice, get educated. When it comes to religion liberties, most Americans have not read the Bill of Rights, they are misinformed. The founding fathers wanted freedom of religion, not freedom from religion. We would have a much stronger republic, the Moore County schools focused on teaching reading and critical thinking and writing. It's important to know how to write. Often, teachers, administrators, and elected officials do not have an accurate understanding of the Constitution, the Bill of Rights, and how to lawfully govern. We need freedom of speech, of the press as well. I'm not going to go into all the details that we have needs to do. We also, we need to do the education to make sure that the children are educated, that when they leave school, they know how to read and write. I volunteered in the schools, and some of these kids did not even know how to write. I was very lucky. I had one kid who was very good at numbers, and I started teaching her how to translate a number from one equals R-N-E. I was able to translate that for her. So she was going to be passed on to a higher level class, rather than not knowing that she didn't even know how to read, and she was being passed on. That's wrong, and you're part of this school, you superintendent.
Thank you, Ms. Norris. Uh, Ms. Rodenberger.
First and foremost, I want to thank the board's policy committee for the new policy titled Ensuring Dignity and Nondiscrimination, and the superintendent's support of the policy committee's recommendations to be implemented tonight. This is a giant step toward protecting the children of Moore County from hate and the resulting unhappiness that hate causes. Next, I want to warn anyone listening about certain factions within our society who are systematically using words to try to make it seem like they care about children and people. Euphemisms that are to elicit specific feelings of compassion and concern for others, such as equity, social justice, diversity and inclusion, and culturally responsive teaching. When you hear or read these words or phrases, the hair on the back of your neck should stand up. The people using these words and phrases want to destroy American society as we know it. One of the ways they want to do this is through social-emotional learning, another euphemism. It's not to be confused with social-emotional development, which, for example, an infant notices other infants and children. A young toddler enjoys playing alongside other children. An older toddler participates in play with other children. That's development. Children inherently love one another. They don't think about it, it just happens. By asking a child, "How well do you get along with students who are different from you?" Now, a child has to stop and think about how someone is different, whereas beforehand, differences may not even have been noticed. SEL surveys are detrimental to the positive socially-emotional growth of children. They are an invasion of privacy. Why is Moore County School District doing them? What does Panorama Education offer MCS? Options for diversity, equity, inclusion content. You feel it? Comprehensive SEL content. SOGO Pros. Options for diversity, equity, inclusion content. Qualtrics Pros. Diversity, Equity, Inclusion Module has SEL content. I would like to see the reasons and reasons for and positive outcomes of any surveys given to MCS students before spending any money on survey software, any of it. There are thirty administrators working on these surveys. Perhaps Moore County school system has become bloated, and some cuts are in order. The money could be used to actually educate our children.
Thank you. Mr. Carlson. And again, this is my last request. We will simply adjourn the meeting if the audience does not cooperate.
Really?
Certainly, that can be done. All it takes is a motion. I have asked that you please hold your applause such that the next speaker can hear his name called, and you're not cooperating. Mr. Carlson, you are up next.
Thank you. I have three or four points I'd like to share. The first one is authority. Everyone in this room is under authority. Such authority is either a purely human construct, or it stems from a higher power. Those are the only two alternatives. Number two, the United States is a unique nation. We are the only large nation, and maybe the only one at all, that was founded after peaceful discussion and common consent on the premise that there would be no state religion. Now, that was peacefully done. Our laws would be formulated by elected representatives, yet each citizen would have the right to choose his or own, his or her religion or personal ideology. The third point is that governmental laws can never fully regulate human behavior. And this is particularly true when it comes to human sexuality because it's a rather private area of our lives. For example, the divorce laws vary quite a bit. In each state, there are principles, but they vary a lot. This does not mean, however, that human sexuality can be separated from human morality. What we do in this area can be harmful or helpful, wholesome or destructive, right or wrong, good or evil. For example, the notorious Love Triangle is the root cause of many murders. When I was teaching science in Maryland, a specialist was sent into one of the classes to discuss human sexuality. I left the classroom, and when I returned, something like this was written on the blackboard. If this subject has anything to do with a higher power, then you cannot receive the information you need from the public school system. No state religion, which would include a state acting like a religion, means more freedom, not less. A freedom which includes personal responsibility. That is, the state doesn't have, doesn't dictate a religion. There's more freedom to choose. I will close with these words from Jesus. Whoever then humbles himself as this child, he is greatest in the kingdom of heaven. And whoever receives one such child in my name receives me. But whoever causes one of these little ones who believe in me to stumble, it is better for him that a millstone be hung around his neck and that he be drowned in the depth of the sea.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. As Mr. Allen comes up, our next speakers are, I believe it's Matt Erlater, Erlater?
Erlocker.
Erlocker, okay. Shannon Davis, Someone Simply Named Mary M. I would need a last name. Mary M?
Meredith.
Meredith. And Nancy Basinger and Elizabeth DeGrayer. Mr. Allen.
Yeah, my name's Vic Allen. Uh, I'm a shop teacher at Calvary Christian School. I've talked to you a couple times. The last time I was here, I remember the kids were given awards and given presentations. The one presentation that was given, an award was given to a young man who wrote, who gave a presentation on whitewashed Christianity. I was just wondering, if he put Islam in there, would he have been allowed to do that? Number two, there was a little girl that was talking. I couldn't really understand the presentations from your government school kids, but I did catch a little bit. She said that twenty-five percent of the students that attended Moore County schools did not feel safe. We just rolled on by that. That's a quarter of the kids that come to your school don't feel safe. I know they don't feel safe on your government buses. I can tell by the, the traffic going to the schools to drop them off and pick them up. So something's wrong when a quarter of the people, the kids that come to your school don't feel safe. I'd like to know why. That was from the mouth of babes. I got that out of the way. The other question, the main question is, are God or not? When you were elected, you took an oath. You took your, you put your hand on a Bible, and you put the other hand towards God, and you swore you were going to uphold the Constitution, and you were going to look out for the people of Moore County. You swore about that. All of you probably attend church, and you're taught. However, your organization leaves this out, the whole thing. There's no God here, and without God, we can do nothing. With God, we can do anything. So as long as you're like that now, these people ain't going nowhere. Critical race theory isn't going anywhere. They got a lawyer right there that we pay for that's going to make sure it stays here. You know, I was, I was criticized that I did not, that I, I'm a religious fanatic. Well, we, we started our school fifty years ago because we saw this coming. And if you want to send your kid to a religious school, I'd, I'd send him there. Well, let me tell you, you're sending your kids to a church. The government school is a church. And it's taught human, secular humanism, has no room for God, none, and it's going to fail. The only thing I can say is get out, leave. Start your own school, because this is a failed system that's going to destroy your, your kids in this nation. And that, this is a, this is a pretty kind meeting. This has happened all over the country right now. Your ideas are dead.
Yeah.
We're going to turn back to God, and we're going to save this country. Without God, we can do nothing. And you know that if you attend church.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Uh, Mr. Erlocker.
Say a few words about the audience, please. I want to try to correct.
Uh, Mr. Hensley would like your attention for a moment as well. Again, we've asked that you hold your applause. This is a business meeting. Mr. Hensley?
Although I would never vote to end the meeting, to adjourn the meeting due to disruptions, we are an organization, and we are a country of law and order. The chair has the power to have people removed from this, from this room, and I would have no objection, zero objection, to the chair having people removed who continue to disobey the regulations that this board has set out. Thank you.
I'm Mr. Erlocker.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Mr. Superintendent. My name is Matt Erlocker, and I spoke last time, and I'm, I'm, I'm back. There's just a couple topics I'd like to cover with you. First one, real short, because there's been plenty said, no more masks. We know so much better now than we did sixteen months ago, and masks have been established to be more harmful to children than beneficial. That's, I don't, like I said, I don't want to go into it. There's been plenty said, and we're supposed to be smarter than the average bear here. Secondly, I do appreciate the time that you've taken in the debate on the Panorama platform. But I got to say, looking at the notes for tonight's agenda, I got to say that we, I need to restate my request that we don't renew the Panorama contract. There's nothing good about Panorama. We just heard some other remarks about some of the other platforms being considered. The public outcry is not going to go away, as long as there is any linkage through the content of a survey, through the content of the supporting documentation or teacher professional development, or money trail, frankly, to anything that has to do with critical race theory, or any of its proponents, or any of the agencies, or public figures that have a lot of money behind all these things. That's all I want to say about that. The main meat of what I want to talk about right now is on lack of transparency and trust. We used, we in America used to trust most of our institutions because they were acting on our, what we felt was our best interest. Most of those institutions no longer have our trust, and unfortunately, the institutions behind education no longer have our trust. You've heard some of the reasons tonight. America has always been a mixing bowl, full of different peoples from different lands, different ideas, different religions, none of which seem to be allowed to be spoken of. You just heard a speaker just speak about one or two of them. We are supposed to be able to tolerate each other with our ideas as long as we can still get along after the conversation's over with. While the conversation's been over with for a while now, and we no longer get along. And the school system's role in that cannot be overstated. I, I mourn what would our, at national level, at our state level, and in many, many places I've lived. I used to be in the military. I've lived quite a bit, in quite a few places. Education's not there anymore, and I don't want us to continue on the path that we're on right now. I'm not going to re, you know, restate the Constitution, I'm not going to restate what we said about CRT or Marxism. However, as somebody who did read all of, almost eleven hundred pages of all the unpacking documents, the K through five and the six through twelve, I can say that right now. My time's running out, but trust is not going to be present on this path. And as for improvements, I say, open the curriculum development process. Open it wide open. Dr. Locklear spoke earlier today about how there's supposed to be a public portal in next month. Don't wait.
Thank you.
Don't wait for next month.
Ms. Davis.
My name is Shannon Davis. This is my first time coming to a school board meeting. Um, I would like to introduce myself as a, with the help of the Lord and Lord, Lord willing, I'm a future candidate for the board that I speak to today. I want to take the advantage of the freedom that I have at this moment in time, that if I win the seat that I'm running for, I would not be afforded at that present time, not due to your rules, but due to the rules of our country where I would not be due to your rules, but due to the rules of our country where I would not be able to pray openly. I want to pray for you guys, for your wisdom and for your strength, and for the, everyone here is, and we're, we're just in such despair. We have a fight that we have in us that it's needful, but we're not doing it the right way. We need to be like Jesus, because that's just what I want to do. I was just going to pray. To the Lord, I ask that for the remainder of this meeting, that we would be respectful to each other, that we would listen with open hearts. Pray, Lord, that you would encourage us, that you would help these board members, Lord, give them strength, give them wisdom, Lord, in the decisions that they're facing. God, whenever they signed up for this position, they had no idea the pressures that they would have. Our teachers, our faculty, our children, our whole entire nation, country and state, are going through such turmoil right now, and the only, the way that we will survive as a nation, as the greatest nation on earth at this moment in time, is with your help. I pray, Lord, that you would bless these people, that you would use them, that you'll give them rest, Lord, from the heavy burden that they carry. I thank you, Lord, for the burdens that you've taken for me, for the freedom that I have, and the freedom that we're all able to enjoy, Lord, if we would just choose to accept it. Thank you, Lord, for your love. Thank you, Lord, for dying on the cross for us, for shedding your precious blood to save us from our sins. Help us, Lord, to see who you are. Help us, Lord, in Jesus's name, amen.
Thank you. It's Mary M.
That's a hard one to follow. This is my first time here, so I'm a little nervous. I hope I can get through. As a resident of Moore County, I'm disheartened to see what is happening in the North Carolina school system, particularly with regards to the SEL program, and in particular, the SEL surveys. Many of the questionnaires are invasive into the parent-child dynamic and have no business being incorporated into the school system. The fact that the questionnaires are not listed on the school website for the parents' review prior to the children's completing raises suspicion. Do you realize the parents have had to make an appointment to see these documents and are not permitted to take them off the school premises? Also, it has been the responsibility of the student to opt out, if it's even possible. Why are these questionnaires been so secretive? Who has access to these surveys? How long are they being kept? And what are their purpose? Why aren't the parents consulted as to the completed surveys? It appears that the school system has taken the parent out of the equation, and that is not the school's job to decide what is best for the child's interests. Are you aware that according to an article dated January 2020, that they are looking to combine SEL with global learning, where they will refer to our children as global citizens? And according to UNESCO, this will be referred to as global citizens' education. An example of an activity given for K through two called for a game called Go Fish, where children were passed a bowl, excuse me, of goldfish crackers of sharing equally. After passing the bowls, students compared the number of goldfish each had had. Then they came up with a new way so that everyone had equal amounts in the next turn. In the end, the teacher then distributes equal amounts of goldfish to each student. This is concerning on several levels, one being that our children are not referred to as United States citizens, but as global citizens, and the equal distribution of goods is the foundation of socialism and possibly communism. I'm requesting that the contract for Panorama be canceled until parents have better knowledge as to who is administering and housing these documents, as well as the ultimate goal for these surveys. The money saved by canceling this contract could be used towards the funding of a better social studies program, which according to the Fordham Institute rates the proposed social study standards for North Carolina as a D minus to an F. In closing, I'm requesting, one, to cancel the contract and SEL surveys until further research and buy-in by the parents. Two, stop the proposed social study standards, which have a failing grade. And three, in the mode of transparency, let's place cameras in the classrooms so parents may feel comfortable with what their, what and how their classes are being taught. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Basinger.
Thank you all so much. This is the first time I've ever spoken before the board. I'm a grandmother to twin grandsons, and I've just started noticing some things that seem very invasive to families. Sexual questionnaires, asking personal questions about their sexuality, these questions should be, this is a personal thing, this should be between a parent and their children. The other thing that I was concerned about, I haven't been able to sleep at night, I'm just a grandmother, but I have taught in Moore County schools and in Texas schools, is the vaccines. One of the twins just had a pacemaker put in. If, if these vaccines are required of my grandsons, they could possibly have a side effect of myocarditis. I don't want vaccines forced on my grandsons. And at Pinecrest, they, they started to give some vaccinations, and I grew very alarmed at that because that's not the business of the school system, to give vaccinations. So I called this, called the school, I called the administration building, and they, they were very nice and listened to me. So those are, we don't know the long-term effects of the vaccinations, nobody here Children should not be separated if they have the vaccine or don't have the vaccine. I, I do want to thank the school board in the past. My, my children had excellent education, and I want to thank you so much because they, they enjoyed their school years here in Moore County. So I want to say you all in the past have been doing a great job. But the way things are going right now, parents need to have more input, and, and things will get right again. And I just want to thank you all for in the past, the, the great education that the boys and my children have had at Union Pines, West Pine. And I'm hoping it will continue at Pinecrest, but please stop the invasive sexual questionnaires and the invasive health.
Thank you.
Demands.
Before Mr. DeGrayer takes the spot, the next speakers are Marissa Mulaney, Ruth Caldera, Cynthia Downs, John Zumwalt, and Candace. Candace, we need your last name.
It's okay.
Do we need a last name?
No.
Okay. When you're ready.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth DeGrave, and if you've recently read the Pilot Newspaper, you may have recognized my face. I am one of the 3,600-plus military family members in Moore County that have benefited from this important military liaison position that is now currently in jeopardy. I retired from the military last year from a remote location in Europe. Having been assigned overseas for approximately the last eight years, when I left Moore County en route to those assignments, my children were not school age. However, when I returned last summer, I would have had an incoming sixth grader and an incoming fourth grader. Thankfully, I have many friends here in the area, and I have spent most of my military career in this location and was informed of the redistricting process. I quickly reached out to Moore County schools in order to petition for my older son to attend Cranes Creek this year, so as not to attend one middle school for one year, only to switch to the following, another school the following year, and my request was immediately granted. This military liaison position is an extremely important position and should not be eradicated from the Moore County schools. This district military liaison role is of the utmost importance to military families in Moore County schools. Without this position, there will be an immense amount of guidance and communication lost to military service members like myself. I would have unknowingly had to endorse switching my child to a school without the military move that is usually attached to that. Our children already make enough sacrifices due to our military careers. Losing this position will just increase potential difficulties for our students in the future. I hope the Moore County school board members recognize my personal story and how I benefited from this integral position and change their minds with regarding to eliminating this highly essential position. Being a veteran herself, Rowley understands the ins and outs of our military, and I'm grateful for her service and sacrifices and her immense efforts to support the military families across Moore County. I have worked with her personally in this liaison position on the Moore County Schools Military Family Advisory Council, and I am the sixth grade exceptional child teacher at Cranes Creek Middle School. I look forward to interacting and supporting this position and interacting with her for many years to come, and I hope Moore County School Board does as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Mulaney.
I'm here to speak on the benefit the military liaison position has for military children and for the Moore County School District. First, I'd like to say that Mr. Hensley was correct when he stated that, quote, "Military residents are smart." Both my husband and I hold master's degrees, mine in physical therapy and his in atypical warfare from the Naval Postgraduate School. My husband is also a Green Beret in the Special Forces, so we're not afraid to stand up against oppressors. However, Mr. Hensley was incorrect when he stated that we did not need the military liaison position because we have support groups and social media to help each other. No support group would have helped my family with the discrimination we experienced when we transitioned two kids to this district. We supplied our school with my son's IEP and informed them that our incoming kinder would need a 504 plan for his multiple health conditions prior to the start of the school year. However, the school failed to implement a 504 for eight months until the military liaison stepped in. The IEP team failed to provide complete evaluations for my son's REVAL, including neglecting to perform classroom observations because they didn't have enough time. Two disciplines performed the same standardized test within the same week, invalidating the results. They had no recommendations or plan for progress monitoring to make sure that my son was making adequate gains, yet they wanted to deny him IEP services. The principal stated that, quote, "He doesn't need math support because when he gets to high school, there's an app that'll do his math work for him." Thankfully, the IEP team had invited the military liaison to the meeting to help deal with me, who they thought was a difficult parent. She witnessed the poor treatment and discrimination I was experiencing and stepped in. She brought my son's case to the district for review, and he was found to indeed need more, not less, IEP services. My son has thrived this year due to having proper services, thanks to Rowley being his advocate. I also believe that Rowley protected the district from potential litigation for the school's failures for implementing a 504 plan to keep my child safe at school, and for failing to provide sufficient evaluations for my son's IEP as they are legally bound to do. Military families are unique in that we are required to move frequently, and no parent can memorize the special education laws of all 50 states. Hence why the military liaison position is imperative. Instead of using other schools' lack of support for military children as a reason for eliminating the military liaison position, our district should be proud to set the standard for all districts servicing military families. And in my last 24 seconds, I want to briefly touch on this unmasking for next school year. My one child with health risks has not left the house since the start of the pandemic because he is at high risk for dying from coronavirus, and if masks are not mandated for unvaccinated children, it wouldn't be safe or accessible for him to attend school. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Downs. I'm sorry, I might have got you out of order.
That's okay. I'll switch. Hi, my name is Cynthia Downs. I live at West End, and I would like to echo most of the feelings that I hear from the parents here. I think all of us, parents, taxpayers, voters, are representing people that could not make it. I have personally talked to teachers in my neighborhood that said, "I can't be there. Let me know what they vote on Panorama." I have talked with others in the community, and they couldn't come, but you have a lot of people here, and I really feel like we're all, each of us that are here are representing thousands of others that have similar feelings. I've got bad news and I've got good news. From reading the Panorama, CASL SEL framework, it's hand in glove with CRT, as you guys have known. We're all learning that now. I think parents are confused, they're overwhelmed. If I were not retired, if I had young children at home, there's no way I'd be able to read all that stuff. I know there's an opt-out somewhere on this survey, but where is it? I don't know. I don't know that the parents know, and I have heard of students that were convinced by their parent not to do the survey and then got to school and were re-convinced to take the survey. So that's the bad news. I do have a question about the reasonable expectation of privacy, and I did read the privacy clause. In the Do Not Track Signals from the CASL privacy website, it says there's a Do Not Track setting and an Opt-Out setting that may be offered by your browser. However, CASL reserves the right to change that in the future without notice to you. It also says, please, that while we strive to protect your personal information, neither CASL nor any of our service providers can ensure security of any information. Any such transmission of information to CASL is at your own risk. Is that something that we want to put data of our children in to what they say will follow them forever? When I used to work in the school system, there was a permanent record file, and it was locked up. There was, you couldn't get in there. That is something that we need to, we need to lock it up. We need to not do the contract with Panorama. The good news is that the funding for this Panorama comes from you, the local school board. The state school board cannot, the Board of Education can't not tell you what to do. It is your decision, and I certainly hope that you're able to make the correct decision because the parents and the taxpayers are aware of what's going on, and, and we're going to fight it, whatever we can do.
Thank you. Ms. Caldera.
Hi, this is my first time talking in front of you, and I know that anything in this world can get done when it's not done with a personal interest. In other words, the people out here are not picking on you as an individual, it's the decisions you're making. And they, and I know, I feel that we ask you to represent our children, and when there's no common sense, there's no reason, there's no digestible effect of what's going on, it just screams, "Don't do it." And this thing where they're going to document everything for their kids, and they're going to spend $150,000 to survey our children and document it and put it in, and who knows what, not a server that's probably that secure, as being one of the people that got on the blacklist when they got into the data in Washington. All of this stuff that we called private years ago, we want everybody to kind of be able to get to, seems so wrong. It's like common sense. It says, it screams, "Don't do it." And then when we're going to survey our children to find out if they're rich, poor, if they're, whatever all the information is, and I did not read it all, but you want to survey that, why don't we put the money into giving them special education, more education, more classes that kids need to read better, to have math better? The machines are not going to be the answer. A person has to be able to be on his own. I always taught my children, know what you have to do, and then if you decide not to do it and use a calculator, that's fine, but if you don't know the answer's supposed to be 10 times 10 is 100, the calculator's wrong and you won't know it. And that's what our children are facing today. You talk to some of the children, they don't know math skills, they have no clue, they can't. I gave my grandchild my written letter. I wrote him a letter, and they said, "Honey, I can't read this. It wasn't printed." Where are we bringing our children? What level are we giving them to face the world? And it's not a personal thing. We're fighting for our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Zumwalt.
Hello. I'm John Zumwalt, and you're the school board. And I'm glad to be standing here before you, and I'll tell you why, because I think you're doing a horrible job. I really do. I say that sincerely. Chairwoman, we've, several people ask you to please move this to a larger venue. And I'm glad to be standing here before you, and I'll tell you why, because I think you're doing a horrible job. I really do. I say that sincerely. Chairwoman, we've, several people asked you to please move this to a larger venue, and for whatever reason, you chose not to, and you quoted your, the attorney and the reasons why you didn't have to. And I'd like to say, there are a lot of people in the hallway, and we can't hear anything. It sounds like a bunch of mumbling. They're crowded, they're sitting down, they're standing up, and a lot of them, I completely disagree with their point of view, but they have a right to be in here and hear what you all are saying, and look at you in the eye and tell you that some of us think you're doing a terrible job. Now, in addition to us just having this little bit of time to speak to you, you never respond. Okay, that's your rule, and you can change that, but you chose not to. And this business of not clapping, I think is utterly ridiculous. I went and looked in the rules, the written rules, and there's nothing there, but you're in charge here, even though you work for us. You're in charge, and you can remove anyone you want to, for any reason you want to. I think it's awful that you would think about doing that. Last thing I want to say is this. I've invited every single one of you to come on the radio and have a polite question and answer session with me. All of you have chosen not to do it, except for the three newest board members, and I know you don't like them being on the radio because you've posted, "Get off the radio." Now, I don't understand, I truly, truly don't understand why, Dr. Grimacy, Chairwoman, the rest of you, you couldn't come on and have a conversation with me. If I were in your shoes, I would jump at that chance to explain whatever you've done because you may be completely right, and you could make a total fool of me if you were, but I'm gonna tell you, I'm very upset that you will not communicate with us. You will not, and I don't understand it, and communication does not mean that you put out an email or you, you talk to us. It means we have a conversation, and we never have that. And I would like to ask you once again to please come on the radio. You can bring your attorney if you don't want to answer some of the questions without conferring with him, but it's a very sincere invitation, and I don't understand why you won't do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Before Candace takes her place, here are our next five speakers. Jill, is it Longair?
Longair.
Longair, Bob Howell, Monica Brown, Anthony McCauley, and Lowell Simon. Candace, is it Monica? Monica Brown. Okay, Candace, you're up.
Hi, first, wow, I, so many excellent speakers tonight. I feel honored to be able to have the opportunity to listen, and I hope you guys all feel the same, and thank you for the time for our voices to be heard. I'm Candace. I am a Moore County citizen and a Moore County voter. Last meeting, many of us expressed our objections on Panorama, to which the vote was delayed. I read that Panorama was once again on the agenda, and a brief discussion would occur about alternative platforms, which looked to be a waste of time because the agenda continued to say that they were not comparable to Panorama, and the vote for Panorama would then take place. I must reiterate, Panorama, as mentioned here before, is a Trojan horse. It is a foot in the door to infuse CRT and SEL across all aspects of our children's lives. I'm appalled and sick to my stomach. These surveys are utterly intrusive and cross the line for parental boundaries. It is abusive to manipulate young impressionable minds. Ben Carson said in a recent interview, it was Vladimir Lenin, a Russian Marxist, who said, "Give me your children to teach for four years, and the seeds that I plant will never be uprooted." You don't fight racism with racism. You cannot put an expensive Band-Aid over a gaping wound and say you addressed the problem. It was only, it will only become infected and continue to spread. If you want to address the real problem, ask the real questions, have the real conversations. Don't hide behind a masked political ploy with special interests who do business with communist countries with horrendous human rights. For context, let me say this. I'm a daughter of drug addict parents, and if I had taken these surveys in school, I would have denied the problems. I was comfortable in the life I knew, and I loved my parents even with their faults. It wasn't until later in my life that I asked, "Why didn't anyone help me?" The surveys are not an effective or reliable tool and only create a bigger divide among students and additional workforce staff. It's about human connection. The rise of technology is eliminating human relationships. Based on an article from the News Observer, North Carolina's homeschool population grew by thirty thousand, twenty percent increase over the prior year. Private schools, over thirty-two hundred additional children, a three percent increase. Public schools saw a five percent drop in enrollment, falling seventy thousand students. I caution you, don't brush these numbers based on a pandemic. The pandemic exposed a lack of educational quality in public schools.
Our next speaker is Ms. Longair. Longair.
I wrote very quickly because I was so nervous. I apologize.
Sorry.
I am here as a parent of some Moore County students and a previous Moore County student who had special needs, and I work with military special needs families, and I'm a former special education teacher. There are over two thousand military students in Moore County, and it's growing all the time. I mean, Moore County's exploding, and they are resilient and they are tough, but it's not fair to just throw them to the wolves or to social media. Having an advocate for them with Rowley Sampson, and it's not just her, it's her position, although she has magnified it tremendously, is a benefit to their, to our county, and being only one of five in North Carolina is, again, it's something to be proud of and something to boast about, and for other counties to look at us and say, "We, we need to model after that." Rowley is amazing with helping with special education for military families who are moving in from other counties and from out of state with IEPs and 504s. As you know, or maybe you don't, when you move to a new place, then the kids have to get reevaluated, and their IEP has to get rewritten, and sometimes the accommodations and modifications that they have do not match up with what they had in the last place, and it's really stressful for parents to move and have to have everything redone, and anyway, Rowley is wonderful for working with those, working with and for the military kiddos with special education needs. She also helps with the Interstate Compact and graduation requirements. They're different in every state, and for kiddos that move here, I mean, it's, it's tough if you've, you know, you've gotten what you think you need, and then you move to another state and you're short, or you need something else. And then behavioral health with all the military kids, the stress that they go through, you can't just tell them to find a support group or look on, you know, Facebook or whatever. Actually, most of them aren't on Facebook because it's more for us old people. And social support, some kiddos, I was on the Military Family Council, and one mom reported that her son just decided he wasn't gonna make friends because he was tired of having to lose him. It was sad, and if we support our military kids, it just helps our community. And a final thought from the Military Family Forum that Rowley organized is the goal is for military students to stay on the same track as their fellow students or academic peers. We're not expecting special treatment, just the same opportunities as students with longevity in the school system.
Thank you. Mr. Howell.
Good evening, Dr. Grimacy, Ms. Carter, members of the Board of Education. I'm Bob Howell from Southern Pines. I need to keep my mask on for medical reasons, but I'll speak clearly. I'd like first to thank you for your service to the students, families, and teachers of Moore County schools, and by extension, to all citizens of our community. Next, I encourage you to embrace that larger context when assessing the educational opportunities afforded by the offer of the Southern Pines Land and Housing Trust to purchase the Southern Pines Primary School. From that perspective, you can appropriately value not merely the short-term financial gain that might be enjoyed by selling this facility to the highest bidder, but also the numerous immediate and long-term benefits beyond the fair and substantial monetary compensation offered by the trust. Number one, over the past several years, the trust has undergirded its comprehensive vision of a West Southern Pines Center for African-American History, Culture, and Entrepreneurship with detailed plans for making that dream a reality. Two, this critical component of a revitalized West Southern Pines both honors the rich history of that property and preserves one of the most culturally significant locations in Moore County, the site of the Rosenwald School built in nineteen twenty-four, when that community raised half the cost of that land and school. Three, that school and its successors symbolize the value that West Southern Pines residents have always placed on education, education that entails both academics and character, and therefore has made possible both successful careers and meaningful civic engagement. Four, the envisioned center continues and expands on this rich legacy by providing a world-class African-American History Museum and Cultural Arts Center, educational enrichment opportunities beyond the classroom, small businesses and development and entrepreneurial training, and spaces for nonprofit offices, community gatherings, ethnic cuisine, and recreation. Five, similar redevelopment and revitalization projects in other locations have shown that cultural and economic advantages ripple outward from the immediate neighborhood to the wider community and the entire region. Remember that the North Carolina statutes governing such sales of school property require not top dollar but fair market value, which the trust's latest offer significantly exceeds. A shortsighted focus sees only numbers preceded by dollar signs. An enlightened vision recognizes the enduring value of history, dignity, and promise for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Brown.
I'm here to urge each of you on the school board to find the wisdom to, and I quote, engage in private negotiations with the land trust for the potential purchase of the Southern Pines Primary Site. I have two points for you. As Vince and Bob reminded us, the trust's offer, based on over a hundred separate pledges and donations, more than meets the site's fair market value. Moreover, the trust has now demonstrated that it has resources and support to seize this opportunity. The specific integrated plans for each building and the space in its planned West Southern Pines Center is laid out in the trust memorandum, and these are testimony to the resourcefulness and ambition of the West Southern Pines community and its many supporters in Moore County and beyond. Second, I ask each of you to pay special attention to the input you're receiving from the town of Southern Pines. The primary school property is centrally located just a mile from downtown. Transforming the primary school into a Center for African-American History, Cultural Arts, and Business is the ideal counterpart to the repurposing Southern Pines Elementary as the Montessori Community School. Each of these campuses has for decades educated students from all over town and played a vital role in its own community and as a center for sports, arts, and gatherings. Under local nonprofit ownership, each historic campus can involve its community in reimagining and rebuilding. Last week, at a prayer walk to one, at one school, and an art sale at the other, people spoke to me fondly and with, and with excitement really, about their experiences as students, parents, teachers, as athletes, et cetera, at each of their schools. So, clearly, if we, we can embrace that idea that each of these communities can go from the past to the future. I speak to each of you now also as a twenty-four-year resident of Southern Pines, grateful to raise my only daughter in Moore County and to pay for its excellent schools. I speak also as a lifelong educator who takes pride that in my four decades on the faculty at UNC Pembroke, I helped educate at least a dozen of the outstanding English teachers in all three of this town's public schools. I now urge each of you to share my vision. In a few years, when I show newcomers and visitors the spectacular new Southern Pines Elementary School, I will show them with equal pride to close by our school campuses.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. If you have additional comments, we welcome by email. Mr. McCauley.
Madam Chair, Dr. Grimacy's school board, thank you so much. To the Moore County community, thank y'all so much for embracing what I do in this community. I have ran my hips off Dr. Grimacy in the last four years dealing with my boys, okay? I am the CEO and founder of Mel's of Distinction Ladies of American Youth Organization here in Moore County. Mel's is making achievable, life-enhancing strides. I tell my boys they're distinct because they're set apart. Scenario in the classroom, Anthony, read paragraph one. I'm not reading nothing. Anthony, go, get out of here, just go to ISS. Get, where's the school resource officer? Resource officer comes in, he's a personal comfort. They call me in. Man, you can't throw the chair across the room, young man. What's wrong? I can't read, Mr. Anthony. Teacher kept pushing. Meanwhile, his boys are laughing. His boys are laughing at him, okay? So, I, I want to say, we need to get rid of ISS, and this is something totally different. Please don't forget the outside agencies that still need to come into our school systems on a regular basis. I'm in place in a quiet place in the library not to interfere core curriculum classes on a daily basis. In between those classes, if a young man is in ISS, I love my school resource officer. They are a place for me, a comfort for me as well, a mediator, so I can get a young man and mentor him. Mentoring programs need to continue to be strong within our school system. I have traveled the United States this summer on a book tour. I just released my sixth book, went number one on Amazon in twelve categories. The Impact of Influence, I'm promoting my book, I'm sorry. Anyway, what I'm finding, I stop in school districts, and I talk to people in the communities. We are not up to par in this school district. I see so many other things, and I know mentoring, we have, I'm not talking about funding, none of that. I do this for free, but we need to make sure that y'all keep the outside agencies on your list. It's gonna be critical that we're able to come back to the schools this year. I am a vital part, and I'm not leaving this community because y'all won't let me leave. So, I'm still here and I'm pouring into the community, so thank you so much to the school board for what y'all doing, and, but, I agree with the young lady, sell that school to us for one dollar, because when I opened up the jujitsu program on Saturday mornings, I have so many kids, I have to rent a van, an extra van to bring kids in. The drone program, I'm a drone pilot, they can't afford San Hills Community College. They have me. I can house it there. Sell this school and let us allow some other resources so I can keep these kids out of jail, because we're gonna end up paying for them another way. I also teach at the jail, helping men recover. We're dealing with drug abuse and substance use orders now because they're falling prey. I got sixth graders smoking weed. We don't need to be doing that. When they're not smoking weed, they're throwing chairs across the room. I deal with that, and I love doing it because I'm a place of comfort. I'm a giant teddy bear, but I don't want them to know that. So, thank y'all so much.
Thank you, Mr. McCauley. Mr. Simon, remember, we're trying to hold down that applause. Mr. Simon.
I knew I should have signed up after Ms. McCauley. May never learn. Not the first time I've addressed this board, but I do thank you all for sitting through this. Moore County School Board member Bob Levy, the unum in this story, has repeatedly shown his disdain for the taxpaying public, a pluribus, as well as his complete lack of expertise in the teaching of history. The fact that he received a certificate to teach history is an indictment of our previous social studies standards under which he was tested. Mr. Levy's and Mr. Hensley's shameless promotion of charter school indoctrination explains their fear of losing control of the historical narrative. Projects like the new social studies standards and the West Southern Pines Land Trust are clear threats to their right-wing hold on information and the indoctrination of our young people. Mr. Levy, Mr. Hensley, and Mr. Holmes would like us to believe that America is a Christian nation, and so Christian indoctrination is okay, but that can only be believed if we accept the willful ignorance that they promote. Our founders made it very clear that America was not a Christian nation, and in fact, that is in direct conflict with Judeo-Christian tradition. The entire charters of freedom documents mention religion exactly twice, and only for the purpose of telling us what religion is not allowed to do. Section four, Article six specifically says, "No religious test shall ever be required as a qualification to any office or public trust under the United States." And in the First Amendment, there's that pesky guarantee of freedom of religion. And in the First Amendment, there's that pesky guarantee of freedom of religion. Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof. That's it. See, the American founders were concerned that religious indoctrination would destroy the very freedoms that we're trying to protect. History has already told the story. In 1657, colonial Massachusetts banned Quakers, and in their Puritan mercy explained what should happen to Quakers who returned to the colony. Quote, "A Quaker, if male, for the first offense shall have one of his ears cut off." Where have I heard that before? "For the second offense, have his other ear cut off. A woman shall be severely whipped. For the third offense, and they, he, or she, shall have their tongues bored through with a hot iron." In 1660, Mary Dyer received one of these Christian judgments for returning to the colony after banishment. Upon her return, Mary was arrested, thrown in prison, and then hanged in Boston. And what about the Eighth Amendment, the one about cruel and unusual punishment? Is it just me, or does burning an internal lake of fire, as taught by many of our publicly-funded charter schools, seem unusually cruel? It's the hypocrisy of Mr. Levy, Hensley, and Holmes that should make us suspect of their true agendas. It's fine to criticize indoctrination if that's what you actually mean.
Thank you, Mr. Simon.
Thank you.
At this point, at the request of several board members, we're going to take a five-minute Sam Walker, Jim Simeon, Kat Claudio, I believe that's the last name, Allison McCloskey, and Bea Murphy.
Thank you for that break. I needed to use the facility.
I took you returning yell. Thank you.
Well, first of all, thank you. It's a pleasure for me to be here. I've never been to one of these before, and I'm rather overwhelmed, and I'm glad there's not a quiz afterwards. I came to be another voice that supports the Southern Pines Land Trust and the possibility of something really good in West Southern Pines. I know a lot of the people connected with that enterprise, you've heard them. I thought what Bob Howell said really nailed it in so many ways. But I also know that this is a tough choice for y'all, and my hat's off to you, it really is. You have an almost impossible job, but you're doing it gracefully, we hope. And I'm also glad to say something good about the schools here. When we moved back here in 2003, I had the opportunity to become involved in Moore County schools. In fact, I worked for Moore County schools, and I served children, and teachers, and principals, and coaches in Southern Pines Primary School, Southern Middle, Aberdeen Primary School, Aberdeen Elementary School, and Pinecrest High School. It was a real delight, and what I saw was the caliber of caring on the parts of these teachers, principals, guidance counselors, and the rest. And what I saw back in those days was a certain civility of being able to get along, and even if we differed, we found common ground. So my hope for all of you, and my hat's off to those of you who are here because you care about your issues and you care about your kids, my hope for all of you is that you will find a way, past all the politics and whatever rhetoric's gone before, find a way to work together for the common good. And if you support that Southern Pines Land Trust, and somebody says to you after the fact, "Well, you could have gotten more money for that. Why'd you do it?" Be able to look them in the eye and say, "Because it was the right thing to do." Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Simeon?
Dr. Carter, Dr. Remesey, board members. I stand here for probably the first time I've ever done this in my life. Now, I've sat where you are sitting, and Dr. Remesey had the, ooh, excuse me, opportunity to sit, but I have not had the opportunity to.
Kent's fixing you up there, Jim.
There you go, you're good.
Kent's working on it there.
Oh, okay.
Right now.
Can I go again? All right. Well, what I was going to say was, I've had the opportunity to listen and have to listen, as you have tonight, very attentively, to different points of view on different subjects in a wide range. But I want to talk to you about one item, and it's based on my past history as former Mayor Protem of Southern Pines Town Council, Town Council member, Planning Board member, school superintendent, and also Executive Director of the Local Chamber of Commerce. So I've sort of covered the waterfront there, folks, in different views. But with saying that, I want to say that I think you have the opportunity to make a decision tonight that will greatly impact all areas of Moore County, not just West Southern Pines, not just Southern Pines, but all of Moore County. You have an opportunity to increase the economic opportunities for our community, because there's no greater force within a community than when a community comes from within and exudes its energies to say, "Let's be better. Let's get better." And that's what we've got the opportunity to here tonight. I get emotional, folks, but I want to share that the trust has made, I think, a very substantial offer for the purchase of West Southern Pines. Now, yes, you can say, and I've said, and I've said, in each of your seats, and I know what kind of decisions you have to make, but you must make what is not just the best economic decision for the moment, but what's the best economic decision long range? What impact will this have? What will we be able to do for everyone? By approving the proposal that has been presented to you by the trust, there's no question in my mind, West Southern Pines Middle School will become the center of economic development for not just Southern Pines, or not just West Southern Pines, but for Moore County, because it is the equivalent of boosting in every way possible economic development. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Claudio?
Claudio.
Little high school French.
I know, right? I could barely say it, too. I inherited that name. First, I just wanted to say, before we even started, that I never come to meetings, I don't belong here. There's so many issues, and the amount of things you guys have to face are so dire, every single issue, that it honestly overwhelmed me. I thought I would just come in here and talk about the school liaison position. And there are huge things, with things that'll impact us for years, in addition to my things. So when I look around the room and I listen to everybody, I really feel the spirit of we the people. So I'm so thankful, when I can't be there as a military spouse who is exhausted, I'm so glad there's people like you who are retired, not even in the school system, not even dealing with these things, and you are still here, so I'm so thankful. So I'm here for the military liaison position, and I really, I don't come to these things because there's smarter people than me. I have two kids in the school system, I'm a working parent, and I have an exhausted Green Beret at home. I bounce between being a parent to three, to a parent to four, in a good way, right? When he comes home, it's, and it's an integration thing. He's exhausted, he's confused, I've got 20 systems in place, down like how we stack the paper in the house, he comes in and throws papers all over, and so my kids are upset and the system's upset. And these are, this is a funny way to put it, but there are so many more important things that get thrown by the wayside as well. And we can't see these things a lot of times because these are micro problems that happen every day, right? Maybe it's your kid's attitude shifts just a little bit to the left or the right with the way they don't want to do something or the way they do something, and it is so aggravating as a parent to deal with it. I am so thankful that there's a military liaison position that can see these things before I see them, because I get pieces of my kids every day, right? If I divide four by 24, if I'm awake 100% of the time, which I feel like I am, that's still only bits and pieces of my family, and I can only put so much into them. I stopped having kids, so don't worry, there's no more, but I can't do it alone, right? And we don't just have normal soldiers here, we have super soldiers. The national standard doesn't even cut it for us, because our husbands, and our women, they want to do the craziest job. They want to be the NFL of the Army, right? This isn't the normal Army. So if, what I want to know is, why can't we add more people to look out for my kids when there'd be in little terrors, you know? When they're interrupting classrooms, when I had, you know, but my daughter cried for eight days straight one time at home, her eyes were swollen just because her dad went to a training for a week, you know, and when he came back, she cried. I can't do this job alone, you know? We need people like Rolly. She services, I'm just taking the numbers that I'm getting and I'm seeing, so I'm sorry if they're wrong, 3,600 children. Are you going to tell me that if I put 3,600 children on that lawn, you're going to ignore their parents? Are you going to ignore their little weird problems that comes up from having super soldier parents? They made this huge sacrifice, all you have to do is pay under a teacher's salary for liaison, so please reconsider, please reconsider. Don't take her position away. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McCloskey? She's still here.
My name is Allison McCloskey. I've lived in Moore County most of my life, and what you consider a local. When my husband and I got married and we found out we were stationed at Fort Bragg, we knew we would put roots in Moore County. Most of our decision to raise our family here was based on how fantastic this school system is. I'm here tonight because a few of you can't comprehend benefits of having a military liaison position in our schools. Our school system has over 3,600 military-connected students. For those of you who have a hard time with math, that's a third of the students. We have those students in every school district, or in every school in our district. These children deserve our support. The military liaison position provides, just to name a few, support during transitions, transcript reviews, compliance with the Interstate Compact, military-connected professional development for all staff, oversight of impact aid and AYPYN funds, and oversight of our student-to-student and MFLAC services. I'm in a unique position, because I saw my military friends go through our system without this support. I saw the struggle, the lack of understanding, I saw how hard it was for them, because they didn't have the support the military kids have now. The fact that there are board members who do not support this decision is ridiculous, and dare I say, unpatriotic. It's a shame I have to stand up here and speak on this subject. It's a shame a few of you do not support our military children, and it's a shame that instead of having discussions like adults, you jump on the radio or social media to run your mouth. The military liaison position not only supports our military-connected children, but benefits all the children in our schools. So stop wasting time, do your job, and focus on matters that actually need to be discussed. A highly beneficial position. A highly beneficial position isn't one of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Beam, before Beam Murphy gets, are you Miss Murphy? Let me call the next group. I believe it's Dr. Megan Numbus? Numbus? Did I have a taker? Okay. All right. Gail Scott, Linda Watkins, Al McShirley, Dr. Tashima Hackett.
So my name is Brenda Murphy, and I'm a resident of Southern Pines. And I'm very glad to be up here, after several people have pointed out what a fabulous thing the project for the Southern Pines Primary School is, and how even if they only paid a dollar, it would be a great thing. But I've decided that my role here is to speak in favor of the sale of the Southern Pines Primary School to the Land and Housing Trust in the following, with the following The idea that you're not getting the market value and you should hold out for more money, this may nag you, because it may come to bite you afterwards, but it's not really substantiated. The assessment made by the new assessors did put the value at a higher amount than the previous assessors. And that's what was reported in the paper. But people have, with good sense, can see that the value of the unentailed part of the property was valued at three hundred thousand dollars, or three hundred and something thousand dollars, and the entailed value was valued at less. So the value of the unentailed property is less than the value of the entire property from the first go-around. So the fact of the matter is, the entailed property is probably, could be seen as an expense to the school board, because it is entailed. And someone accused people of threatening to take the school board to court if they ignored the legal documents about that. But that is not a threat. That's just informing you that that's something that you need to take into account. It is not a threat. You cannot just divest yourself of this property. But anyway, the point that I'm making is that the people who have been making contributions to this fund to buy the property, it is my belief that you are, that they have been coming forth with the amount of money they have, because they are happy to support the Moore County Public Schools. And if the land trust withdraws there, or is refused, the Moore County School Board will not make the amount of money that is on the table. Thank you.
Thank you. Doctor, pronounce your last name again.
Numbers.
Num, oh, it's Numbers. Okay.
Yes, sorry.
Thank you.
Doctor handwriting. Hi, my name is Dr. Megan Numbers, and I'm a clinical mental health counselor here in Moore County. I specialize in working with children, specifically military children. And since being in practice for the past four years or so, I've helped over three hundred of our military students. I've seen the struggles that they face in our Moore County School District, from academics and IEPs to moving to and from our school district, to and from North Carolina, to having social anxiety, making new friends and losing friends. I've interacted with both the teachers and the staff members, helping them understand the needs, the special needs of military students. Military children and students, or military children and families face a multitude of challenges on a daily, weekly, monthly, and yearly basis. Of those challenges, education has been consistently a top stressor for military families. For the past, you know, decade or so, we, the Blue Star Family Organization has done a military lifestyle survey, and the education has been a top concern, so much so that it impacts our service members' ability to do their job, to perform when they're at work, which is protecting our nation. Furthermore, fifty percent of military families feel disconnected from their civilian communities. And they also feel that their civilian communities don't understand the sacrifices that they make. But Moore County understands. We understand our military community. And not only do we understand, Ms. Sampson understands. Her position as a military liaison helps to bridge the gap between military and civilian support services, like myself, to help our military families and their children. Ms. Sampson's role is so much more than just being a support person. She offers continuing education for teachers and staff about military culture and how to support our military families and students. And she also, you know, advocates for them to other organizations. I know this because we work on the Military and Government Counseling Association Board of North Carolina, and we advocate for the needs of our military families across the state. You know, the character of our community, our county, and our nation is dependent upon how we treat our most vulnerable population, and children are one of those populations. So to eradicate this position, the military liaison position would be to take away an integral support person that military families and children have not only utilized, but they rely on for guidance. Taking away this position also takes away the peace of mind that Ms. Sampson provides military families with, the reassurance that military children's education is a top priority for Moore County. So research shows that when the service member's family is taken care of, they perform better at work. So increased community support for military children and families is correlated to more productive soldiers, better functioning units, companies, brigades, and battalions, and a more cohesive military force. So to take care of military children is to take care of our service members and our veterans that we all love so much. In Moore County, we love our veterans and our small businesses that are run by military families. So let's show the same support to them, to our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Gail Scott.
Hi. Hi, I'll be brief. I don't have a prepared speech. I just wanted to come and support the Southern Pines Land Trust for the acquisition of the primary school. My kids went there, and my older daughter was here over Father's Day weekend, and she learned of the project at the school, and from sent in Ms. Nora over here. And she was so on fire that not only did she write them a big check, but she went back to LA and she contacted all of her former students, students that she went to school with, and said, "What an exciting project was going on there." Now, I was totally on board and totally for it, but even though I thought it was great, I was never that excited until she got so excited. I mean, I thought it was great, and I was, like I say, for it. But when she got so excited, it made me realize, this is an awesome thing we have an opportunity to do. And so I came to just say I support that. And being here, I haven't been in a school board meeting in about fifteen, twenty years, but it kind of reminds me of a movie on some family channel tonight, and I just hope we have that fairy tale ending. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Watkins.
Good afternoon. I just want to come and say to everyone is that we have been fighting for so long for the four acres and a mule. And the four acres, of course, you all may know, is the nineteen twenty-four deed. Now what we need is, we need the money, and that is the rest of the acres that we have been fighting for, for so long. And here in Moore County, we have been fighting so long for the four acres and the mule. The mule is the money piece that we need. So we, the NAACP, is asking you to take the offer of the Sandhills Land and Housing Trust. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McShirley.
I just, good evening. I just want to have two points. One is, I wanted to enter this to Ms. Sonia Parker. Is she here?
Yeah, here. I'll get it to her.
Oh, thank you. I got, I have several, but I wish, I want to make sure everybody on the board gets it and leave it up to the superintendent, who else may have missed the yesterday's pilot story, which I know, being a writer, when you see good writing, you should pass it around. Second point, I just have a second point to make. That is, I noticed a whole lot of people came up and talked about our children. And I just, Linda and I have, I have seven kids that most people in the room would call white, I guess. And she has five kids that most people in the room would call black, although two of them are either white and a black parents. So when people come to you and say, "Our children, our children," I don't, I don't know who they're talking about. I want you to give that a little thought. Thank you.
Thank you. And before Dr. Hackett gets started, our next speakers, and I'm sorry, I do not know what this name is. It's a Dr. Anubia Anukia. Dr. Tamesha Thomas, Rowley Sampson, and then we have phone-in callers.
Good evening, everyone. Again, I am back, Dr. Hackett, speaking in reference to a mother of minority students here in Moore County and have been for over twenty years. A few weeks back, my niece was in, she's three years old, she was in the backseat of the car, and she was having a tantrum. And as she was having this tantrum, my sister-in-law, she took her and she got something to eat, and as she began eating her fries, she said, "Auntie, I love you. I was just hungry. I'm so sorry." So if you've had any psychology class, you have heard of Maslow's hierarchy of human needs. And at the bottom of that hierarchy, it states that if you do not have food, if you do not have security, if you do not have love or feel as if you belong, or then you cannot begin to esteem yourself, nor can you get self-actualization, meaning that you can see yourself succeeding in any type of society. So the fight here is not about critical race theory, nor is it about panorama education. It is about understanding filters. Filter simply means that my decisions are based upon my experiences, and until you live my experience, you can't speak nor make a decision based on my experience. So while you attempt to protect some children from being taught and experienced, many are living these experiences every day. See, the difference is, you have the ability to pull your children out of the schools, place them where you would like. When you're afraid of being tracked, your children are being tracked, and having these numbers follow them for years, minority children are tracked daily, by the vast majority of them that are placed in in-school suspension, by the vast majority of them that are placed out-school suspension, that are then labeled ADD or ADHD, or sit in a meeting with their parents, because they are being disciplined, performing a handshake, because the team members don't understand their culture. So when you don't acknowledge the experiences of some, their differences, or some are taught to identify their difference, you make their experience or them null and void. So in closing, in a conversation I had with someone that I love dearly, I was told, "We would never agree, because you want to feel everyone's pain." My response, as I was shocked, was, "No, I don't want to feel everyone's pain. I want to validate everyone's pain, because that is called humanity." And that is what I believe the school board has been voted to do, to acknowledge every child in Moore County. So while you are protecting some, many are living these experiences daily, and when you say we don't want critical race theory, what you're saying is, your experience is not important. Now, if you don't agree with panorama, take time to review something. But what you do when you don't take things like panorama, what you're saying is, I'm going to keep Moore County in a bubble, and I don't want my experience to be shared, because I don't want anyone to know the real issues that are happening here. So that is all that I have to say, and thank you.
Thank you. Doctor, would you like to pronounce your last name?
Yes, 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 Madam Chair. It's an honor to meet everybody. I'm Dr. Alanubia. First name is also Doctor. So just so happens that when my grandfather went into service, it was the Army Air Corps. And when my grandfather came out of the service, it was the United States Air Force. And when my father went into the Navy, it was an organization called UDT. Now, unless you're a certain age, you don't even know what UDT was or is. Currently, UDT is a small group of soldiers called the SEALs. And my dad was a comms guy. I bring you greetings from the old North State Capitol of Raleigh, North Carolina. I'm Dr. Alanubia. I used to come here all the time when I was little with four H. And I'd ride horses and I'd get on the farm. I do a program through NC State's Extension Program. I belong with a group called Network Commerce Association. I want to compliment Mr. John Barra. He's been an excellent statesman. He's represented your county well as an architect. It just so happens that my younger son, my oldest son, is a landscape architect. I just wanted to introduce myself. Trustee at First Baptist Church, been a trustee since two thousand and two. I'm not a Democrat. I'm not a Republican. I'm independent, and I just believe in the value of people. And I'm a solutions guy. And I know a lot of times people come here, and a lot of people talk about challenges and they talk about problems. Now, I'm not that guy. I'm the guy who finds more value in focusing on solutions and what brings us together that we can use to build than the guy who focuses more on problems. So that's who I am. I wanted to introduce myself. We're looking at intergenerational relationship development. I've been a trustee at an old church downtown Raleigh in the corner of Morgan Wilmington. It's the oldest church. And one of the things I learned as a trustee is that we take, if we take and do business like we do on the football field, the owner in the skybox is one age. The coach on the sideline is one age. The players on the field are one age. And the fans in the stadium are a different age. But we all got one goal, and that's the way to game. And what we need to do as a community is, we need to have intergenerational relationship development. We need workforce development. The two most powerful things that we need in this country, we need jobs, workforce development, the trades affected by the Silver tsunami, okay? We need our elderly to be able to benefit from our younger people who can do a PowerPoint presentation, and we need the younger people who don't have the benefit of the history to benefit from our elderly, and we need to bring each other into a team. And so for me, I've done NC State, I've pulled permits in excess of fifty million, I've done new market tax credits, but that's not what I'm here for. What I'm here for is to say, intergenerational relationship development is a solution for our community.
Thank you.
Sir, I have a question. Everyone here is probably dying to know, so are you a doctor? Are you named doctor?
Bo.
Do you have, are you, that was my third.
Yes, sir.
All of the above. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. You know, my dad, when my dad got out of the Navy, he was in PSYOPs, and I think it brought it off on him somehow or another.
Thank you. Doctor Thomas.
Thomas. Sorry. I was jumping the gun. Um, hello, everyone. I feel like a fish out of water. I was in the office of Dr. Alanubia, and he said, "Come down to Moore County with me." What he didn't tell you is that he is the person that put the bid in for the Aberdeen Primary School. He left that part out. And so we are here because you will be considering whether or not, I guess, approving that bid. And so I'm a community outreach person. I love kids. I used to teach kids. I was once sitting where you guys were sitting. I was a teacher mad about integrated mathematics at a meeting like this. And this board, they smiled. The board I was looking at, I got my pincers the next day. So when I come into this room, I see community. A little tension in it, but it's community. Y'all are still smiling. And I can tell that you guys are good people. And so as the community outreach person, I want you guys to say, "Yes, Network Commerce Association can have that building." And I want to tell you guys that I'm here for community outreach, because we want to know what you want to do with Aberdeen Primary School. We have to know what you want. We want to hear what you want. We want to know what this community needs. And then I want to film it all, because I want to say, what you guys are doing here, it could, it could really change some things. And so we're not from this community. We need people from this community to tell us what you need at Aberdeen. We don't mind working with the Southern Pines Trust people. They called us up, wanted to know who's bidding on that building. We came in and sat down and talked to them. The story there is awesome. I love that story. And you guys seem like a community that could really change the way things are done everywhere. And I can film it all. That's a shameless plug, and your children. Because it takes a village, and you guys are a village. You are an American village. So I'm going to end this by asking you to say, "Yes, we can come into your community, and we can round up community members, and we can build something that everybody..." and we can round up community members, and we can build something that everybody likes, and y'all can come in here and do business, and the community, everybody's happy." Wouldn't that be nice? That'd be nice, right? Because I was sitting where you were sitting, integrated mathematics, saying, "My kids can't read, they can't count, y'all pass this down to the school system, this is going to be awesome for the school to prison pipeline." I was going out of my wits, and I went home and I wrote myself a curriculum. And I found a man that could buy school. And I want to find a community that has solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sampson.
Oh, no, no, that's a tough act to call. I'll promise not to, you know, get us animated. My name is Rowley Sampson, I'm the Moore County Schools Military Liaison, the physician Mr. Hensley has recommended eliminating in a June 22 Facebook post. I'm also the parent of children who attended Moore County Schools without the support of a military liaison, which negatively impacted their academic opportunities and emotional well-being. At that time, Moore County Schools felt no obligation to meet the unique needs of military children, nor did they comply with the Interstate Compact. It took eight years and three superintendents before military parents were able to establish the Military Family Advisory Council, excuse me, giving military families a voice. It would take another two years before the part-time military liaison position would be created. I consider it an honor and a privilege to be the first person to fill this role, and I hope I am not the last. Every day I go to work with one thing in mind, ensuring military children and their families have a better experience than my family did. While I appreciate the many messages of support from military families, community members, and Moore County School staff that I've received over the past few weeks, my concern is not about my current employment, but the long-term sustainability of this position. I will not always be in this role, and the risk of losing this position will always be a possibility as long as it is locally funded. Military families don't have the luxury of having a state-funded military liaison position like Cumberland, Onslow, Wayne, and Craven County, but Moore County Schools has as many active-duty families as Wayne and Craven County Schools. Instead, military families have to rely on a local district to fund the position and invest in supporting our children. Moore County Schools has over thirty-six hundred military-connected students, close to a third of our student population. And I also want to add that about ten to fifteen percent of our staff are military-connected. To compare the support of our students to a charter school with less than two hundred military dependents is absurd. The fact that a sitting board member would create undue stress for military families who currently rely on this position is insensitive and shows a blatant disregard for the unique challenges military children face in our schools. Our military students transition more frequently, averaging six to nine schools before graduation. They experience higher rates of anxiety and depression compared to their civilian peers. They also live in households that have, are continually impacted by war. Um, as their military parents have spent two decades in sustained combat, military children deserve a seat, or representation, and military families deserve a seat at the table. This is what that position means. It provides military families a way to hold Moore County Schools accountable. On a final note to my colleagues, you deserve better than board members that constantly call for limiting positions without understanding the impact they have on students. Education is not just about reading and math, it's about meeting children where they are and ensuring they have the skills to succeed. Please know I am grateful for each of you and the professionalism you bring to our classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, that concludes our in-house speakers. We have, uh, seven people signed up to speak through call-in.
Only five of them have actually called in, so I'm, I'm going to bring them in on the conference phone in order, and then hopefully they'll. This work last time, I'll see if this works this time. This should be Christina McCall. Is Christina McCall there?
Yes, I'm here. Hello?
Yes.
Hello?
Can you hear us?
I can.
Okay.
My, my turn?
Yes.
Yes, proceed.
Hi, I'm Christina McCall. Uh, by the way, I am a Moore County voter. There is a large political influence to bring SEL to our schools. In 2019 alone, there were more than two hundred pieces of legislation referencing SEL. Why do we want the government involved in developing our children's attitudes, values, and beliefs? This is a social engineer, this is social engineering, and it will fail. You cannot regulate the human mind, no matter how much you spend trying to. Let's not fall into this trap. Get rid of companies like panorama. This is Bill Gates and Common Core 2.0, only this time it's Zuckerberg and panorama. Common Core cost us four trillion dollars, and our schools are still failing nationwide. Parents, this is another experimental education movement, and our kids are the lab rats. Board members, name one successful education movement that has come from a top-down mandated approach. The progressive education elites are once again getting rich off of us. We don't need panorama to solve our problems, or to give us surveys, or treat our kids like a statistic. Do it in-house. What is your goal? Establish your goal, have an original thought, and develop the solution. Why are you following along and throwing money at an empty solution? Again, like Common Core, this starts as the shell of a plan with no proven results of actually improving academic success. Our teachers don't need professional development out of a box. Whatever you do, you've got to get off the hamster wheel. Stop checking off boxes and following along with whatever big government crams down our throats. Identify the problem and think for yourself to determine the solution. You can't buy these solutions off the shelf. It didn't work for Common Core, and it won't work for this. We've completely lost focus of our students' academic performance and replaced it with a focus on social and emotional needs. It's time for the seven of you to take a stand and make a choice. Get rid of panorama. And to echo AJ, we're not going away, we'll get a bigger venue. Thank you.
Hey, you, you might want to mute the stream. It's a little delayed. This should be Cheryl Christie Bowman.
Yes, it is. We'll mute the stream now.
Thank you.
Mute the TV. Thank you.
Thank you.
She can go ahead.
She needs a prompt. I'm sorry. Your love for the Board of Education, you may proceed.
Okay, my name is Cheryl Christie Bowman. Tonight, many members of the public have addressed this board on a wide variety of topics. I could talk to you about the military liaison position, but others have spoken on that much more eloquently than I can. Talk about the bid from the Southern Pines Land Trust, but others are more knowledgeable on this topic than I am. I could talk about CRT and social studies standards, but that topic is better left to teachers and educators to discuss. We have already heard the disaster that comes with, from uninformed pretending to be informed tonight. Today, the board discussed a policy to ban indoctrination in our classrooms. This proposal was made in spite of the fact that our teachers do not indoctrinate our children, they educate them. To propose that a funeral home director, a gun dealer, and an owner of a toy store should have the final say over what our teachers are allowed to teach proves how deeply this board distrust our teachers. Perhaps if instead of accusing our teachers of causing these problems which don't exist, board members should spend more time in the classrooms actually listening to what our teachers teach. If they did, I'm sure members would come to understand that our teachers do not deserve either their suspicion nor their control, but their defense and their support. It's sad and shameful that we have heard so many members of this community take up this false narrative of divisiveness and distrust being put forth by these board members and use it to attack both our board and our teachers tonight. It alarms me to hear members of this board openly attack, accuse, and berate our teachers and staff on both social media and the radio. How will we be able to recruit and retain good teachers and staff when employees know they may wake up any morning to see a board member has called for their job to be eliminated on Facebook? Or when they know their personal love life may be mocked and ridiculed by a board member on the radio? Or when they know they may be publicly accused at any moment by a member of this board for either unethical or illegal behavior with no supporting evidence whatsoever? When Dr. Grimacy inevitably decides to retire, why should we as a community expect any qualified applicants for superintendent when everyone in this state knows that our board members constantly attempt to drag personal, political vendettas into the public in the guise of personnel discussions, which if legitimate, should be held in private? If this destructive behavior doesn't stop, the entire system will suffer, but it's starting to look like that that is the intention of this vile rhetoric. I would ask this board to stop playing political games and instead focus on fulfilling their duty to enhance, fund, and protect public education in Moore County. I trust our teachers, and I value our staff. I believe we should support and protect them. It's a shame that for the first time that I can remember in my life as a Moore County resident, that what they need to be protected from is against the members of this board that is tasked with serving them. Thank you.
Thank you. This should be Kim Wade. Um, you're with the Moore County School Board of Education. You may speak.
I can speak now.
Yes, sir. Please proceed.
Do you want me to turn this, um...
Yes, if you could mute any sound in the background, it'll be easier for us to hear.
Yes, good evening. My name is Kim Wade, and I am president of the West Southern Pines Civic Club. We want a walkable community where our residents are able to walk to a business and work in our own neighborhood. We want our children to have relationships with business owners who look like them and live in their neighborhood. In order to do that, we have to create business opportunities to residents who earn less than fifteen dollars an hour. Business spaces available in our local commercial district are not affordable to people who earn, do not earn a living wage. The annual living wage for a household in North Carolina is sixty thousand dollars a year. The median wage for sixty percent of African-Americans in the West Southern Pines District overlay is less than thirty-five thousand dollars a year. The lifespan of a dollar in the Asian community is twenty-eight days. In the Jewish community, the lifespan of a dollar is nineteen days, and the lifespan in the African-American community is approximately six hours. African-American buying power is at 1.1 trillion, and yet only two cents of every dollar an African-American spends in this country goes to black-owned businesses. The only businesses we have available to support our essentials do not invest money back into black communities and do not feel a need or an obligate, obligation to do so. North Carolina earns over a hundred and twelve million in arts, entertainment, and recreation. With all our talent in visual and performing arts, we need a platform in West Southern Pines, and we want to tap into that industry. How do we do that? We create opportunities. We create jobs and businesses that can supplement minimum wage jobs. When the spectators drive through our neighborhood and wonder why we need repair, it is because parents are trying to keep food on the table, the rent, mortgage, and utilities paid. Owning the Southern Pines Primary School and converting it into a business complex, cultural art, and education center, we will have an opportunity to create a self-sustaining neighborhood we once knew. Owning our own florist, doctor's office, ice cream shop, bakery, just to name a few. We are not zoned to own and operate these businesses within our neighborhood. Why do you want to deny us this opportunity? To use this commercial building to develop the economics needed to grow a walkable, sustained community. To use this commercial building to develop the economic need, grow a walkable, sustained community. Thank you.
This should be Lynn Thompson. Could you mute anything in the background?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes. You're on with the Moore County School Board. You can proceed.
Okay, thanks so much. Um, I just first want to say thank you all for serving on the school board and for taking the time to listen to all of these public comments. I know you've already had a very long day, and you certainly have had a lot of people giving you advice. So I'll be very brief. In preparation for this meeting, you had many documents to read, and my hope is that you had the opportunity to fully and carefully consider the memorandum in support of Southern Pines Land and Housing Trust offer, the purchase of Southern Pines Primary School site. This document provides a very comprehensive justification, not only in terms of a fair offer, but also for the many educational, cultural, and economic benefits to the community to support you in the action to direct the staff to enter into private negotiations with the land trust for the purchase of the Southern Pines Primary site. Thank you so much.
This document provides a very comprehensive justification...
Could you mute the stream in the background, please?
... their offer?
Uh, yes.
For the many educated...
Yes, you're on with the Moore County School Board. I know you left a voicemail. Could you give your name? We couldn't quite get it from the voicemail.
Yes, my name is Kia Korsunskaya.
Thank you. You can proceed.
Okay. Um, hi, I just wanted to point out that I'm a Moore County voter, um, a Moore County parent, I'm a military parent, um, and I'm also a minority. Uh, just wanted to state where I am standing, because I think I've heard a couple of people throughout the talk tonight who don't seem to be as connected to the community, though that they have a lot of input to give. Um, I've also heard a lot of people talk about racism and addressing that without discussing actual racism in the community. Um, we have proficiency rates for black students in Moore County that are abysmally low, and standards are low across the board. I've spoken to a number of graduates from different schools in our area who've gotten to college and learned that they're the only ones who can't properly write a paper, even though they passed high school English with a B. I've seen quite a few teachers and advocates pledging their dedication to critical race theory despite the fact that it's been around for decades and has never once proven to help minorities. Or panorama, which makes us feel good but does not actually produce results. For those of us that care about helping minority communities, I'd like to see more time and money spent, um, used wisely, and instead of investing new, inventing new curriculum with equally low standards, if we're dedicated to addressing racism, let's talk about actual racism. Um, let's bring in accomplished civil rights leaders. There are some who live in our very community. Instead, we have people who merely champion causes on social media, deciding what our kids should learn about these things. Um, and they don't have any connection to our specific community. We're not Raleigh, we're not Charlotte. Moore County is small, it's unique, and I think our needs should be addressed uniquely. I'd like to see money spent on mentorship programs for kids from fatherless homes and work-study programs for the kids who have to help support their families. If we want to see minorities succeed, we need to raise standards, not lower them or change them. We need to integrate into a cohesive society and not try to segregate further. I'd like to see our parents and students be able to evaluate teachers in schools to speak back about, and give constructive criticism about their educational experience and whether they felt the time and money was well-stressed. We do a lot of surveying students to see where they are, but we don't do the same in letting our teachers, um, hear feedback from the parents and students that they serve about how they feel their time is spent, um, on that education. Uh, we have proposals to simply check diversity boxes and inclusion boxes, but I'd like to see more real issues plaguing our specific community get addressed. Um, I think we're very fortunate to live in a small community, and we can talk to our neighbors, we can find out what they need, but I don't see a lot of that happening. Um, I'd like to see more conversations between people from different income brackets and political spheres, um, so that these kids can be addressed as individuals instead of having the standard... Thank you, guys, for listening, and thank you for taking the time for this meeting.
You are muted. You can mute or unmute yourself by pressing star six.
That was the last caller.
That concludes our public comment period, uh, here at 9:22. All right, at this point, we are going to move on into, uh, action items. Our first one is a discussion and second, second reading of new and revised policies for approval. Uh, Mr. Levy, I believe you're going to make that presentation.
Yes, um, and, uh, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. I would first like to say thank you to my... I would first like to say thank you to my committee, the Policy Committee, which consists of you, Madam Chair, and also Mr. Dennison, as well as myself. We worked on these new policies together, and we're rather proud of all of these all of these new policies which we've come up with. I want to highlight two of the policies for the board. The first policy is a policy which should be helpful in preventing critical race theory in our schools. There is a bill called House Bill 324. House Bill 324 is not doing too well in the state legislature, but thanks to especially the work by Mr. Dennison, as well as the rest of the committee, we have come up with a policy for our local board which mirrors HB 324. What it does is it bans the teaching and the promotion of the following: that one race or sex is inherently superior to another race or sex. It bans the promotion of the concept that an individual solely by virtue of his or her race is inherently racist, sexist, or oppressive, whether consciously or unconsciously. That an individual should be discriminated against or receive adverse treatment solely or partially because of his or her race or sex. That an individual's moral character is necessarily determined by his or her race or sex. That an individual solely or by virtue of his or her race or sex bears responsibility for actions committed in the past by other members of the same race or sex. That any individual by virtue of his or her race or sex should feel discomfort, guilt, anguish, or any other form of psychological distress. And to further ban the promotion of the belief that a meritocracy is inherently racist or sexist belief, or that the United States was created by members of a particular race or sex for the purpose of oppressing members of another race or sex. Additionally, we have come up with an employee personnel policy which says that employment or volunteer service with the school system does not preclude an individual from participating in political activities, such as registering and voting, campaigning for candidates, or issues running for or serving in public office, attending political events, and contributing to partisan groups or candidates. But these political activities must not, one, take place during work hours, involve school system funds or materials, or make use of an official school position to encourage or coerce students, employees, or others to support or oppose a political party or a candidate. In addition, we have proposed the other changes to our policies which appear in the memorandum attached to the agenda. The committee makes the motion that this be adopted, and that further, because the title of the agenda says it's a first reading, we further move that we waive a second reading and adopt the proposed policies as presented this evening. And that does not require a second, I believe, Madam Chair.
That's correct.
It's coming from the committee.
That's correct.
Submit.
Are there questions or comments concerning the policies?
Madam Chair, I have just one comment with regard to the proposed policy on ensuring dignity and non-discrimination. I feel that we have policies in place that address discrimination, and we have staff who, if we allow them to be in their expert role and stop micromanaging, I believe they will follow the policy. So I do not agree with this one particular policy. Just the one policy, yes.
Other comments or discussion?
Madam Chair, just to respond briefly, I think that what we have heard here tonight is that we have a public which is concerned about something called critical race theory. I don't think, I think we debate a lot of what critical race theory is, and oftentimes, we don't get a definition of it. This defines, I believe, what the public is concerned about. And it is important that it get into our policy, not as a mallet, but as a way to guide our students and staff as to the philosophy and the policy of Moore County schools. It is important to recognize and ensure dignity and non-discrimination. And these days, perhaps, we could have not, perhaps years ago, we didn't need to bring in such a policy. But today, we definitely do, as it needs to guide our staff, our students, and our teachers into what is, what this board expects. And that is dignity and non-discrimination.
Mr. Dennison.
Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment. This is no reflection on our staff or our administration, because from my point of view, this has been our policy, or included in other policies that we have. This is just to make it very clear to the public what we expect our teachers not to do to keep critical race theory stuff out of Moore County schools. But I just want to emphasize that no reflection on our staff at all, because, you know, we have, critical race theory hadn't come here in a big way yet. So there may be individual things, but we'll find out what those are and correct those with individuals. But I think this is needed so the public understands that we're not in favor of the things and the practices that are associated with the critical race theory.
Other comments?
Yeah, I mean, I'd have to agree. I think we practice this all the time anyhow in our schools. It's just kind of repeating what we do. And as far as what you were saying, I mean, I don't, I trust the teachers and what they're teaching, and I don't think they're trying to do anything politically for their own agenda. I think they're trying to teach history and trying to teach facts. But, so I do agree with what you have written. I think it's in our policies anyhow. You just kind of have it in one little section.
Makes it very clear.
Yeah.
Other comments? Then we will proceed to the vote. The motion is to adopt the policies as presented, waiving the option of second reading.
Do we have a second?
You don't need one.
We don't need one, because it came from committee. So at this time, all those in favor of approving the policy, new and revised policies as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries six one. All right, we will now move on to the presentation on the state-required mental health plan.
Madam Chair, staff has an update, as requested by the board this afternoon. Staff has an update. With your permission, may they present that? Dr. Locklear and whoever else may be assisting you to follow up on the board's request, yes.
Yes, sir. They'll be here, but as noted earlier today, we don't have any additional information to share except for the request that if we could outline the cost of the mental health plan. Ms. Edman has been able to put together a spreadsheet that Ms. Mays already put up on the TV there, and she's going to walk us through that. But it's important to note, as we said earlier in the presentation, that there's no new cost associated with implementation of this school mental health improvement plan that's required by law and required by the state board policy. But she's going to walk us through that. All of these items have been, already been implemented or would be implemented either way. So I just want to point that out as we did earlier. Ms. Edman?
Good evening. As you can see on the screen, these are the costs associated with the items that were listed in the mental health plan. As Dr. Locklear said, they were already here. It's just that this is what I've included in the mental health plan. The first various curricula are there on the top. The goal of the week, zones of regulation, et cetera, are the things that we have purchased so far, noting several are zero. The positivity project, I checked with that principal today, and she indicated that she had chosen to not renew that positivity project, opting instead for the one called Six Minute SEL. That was an outlay of nine thousand dollars last year. And that gives us the rights to, it's a book, but it gives us the rights to the book for the whole district. Just a reminder that social-emotional learning is simply teaching children to be responsible, to get along with others, and to make responsible decisions about their careers. The next sections are about the screening and the training. And if you see that the staff training is zero, the signs of suicide, we do pay two thousand four hundred dollars a year for that for our secondary schools. The suicide severity rating scale, the student risk screening scale, those are also free. The bigger expenditures are the management's and the tracking. We've had educators handbook for several years, about sixteen thousand a year. Frontline behavior and social-emotional learning, not learning, social-emotional management system is simply a way, it's an add-on to what the nurses already use to track the students that they see. And it allows us to share information about students in a safe way, but then, so that each other, our counselors and psychologists and social workers, know how the students are doing, what are some critical events in their lives, so that they can follow up and keep them safe. And then the other, the last list are the frameworks that we use. We have a social-emotional framework, positive behavior intervention and support, we've been doing for many years, multi-tiered system of support. I need to point out that that's not just specific to mental health. It looks at our, it's a school improvement framework, and it looks at providing multiple tiers of support for all of our students in academics, attendance, behavior, and social-emotional learning. It's also a way to ensure that if we have a student that we suspect has a disability, we can look back and have a framework, and we can show that these students did have some interventions. They did have good teaching, so we'll be able to decide with good data whether they're eligible for special education or not. As I said before today, the facilitated assessment of MTSS is that assessment that we do. And then the SHAPE is the school health assessment that is specific to mental health, and that is also free. We do that every year. There are several grants that are reliant on that self-assessment. So, any questions?
I have just one follow-up question from our presentation earlier today. You had indicated that our plan was a requirement at the state and federal level.
State level.
State level. What is our, do we have a deadline for submitting that plan to the state?
We, the idea was to adopt and implement the plan on July 1st, and then we are to submit it, so there's an upload through the portal, the Safe and Healthy Schools portal, and that is due by September 15th.
Okay. And do we receive any type of feedback from the state? I mean-
That's a good question, since we haven't done it before.
Okay, all right.
I'm not sure.
It's a new requirement.
It was really nice to know. I don't know.
We'll answer that question later.
When you upload it into the portal, you answer some questions, and then you upload this document. And then, I'm assuming, that we may get some feedback. But then, we're also required at the end of the year to report on what we've done the prior year and what our plans are for the following year.
And so, just to be clear, you have to actually be implementing the plan when you submit it?
Yes.
And just tell them what you're doing?
Yes.
So it's not like they're going to approve it or disapprove it. You just have to have it on file that you're doing it.
Yeah, yes, yes. I don't think they'll, I don't think they'll disapprove it. They won't say this is wrong or change it, I don't think. This is similar to what all the other districts are doing, so I'm hoping that it's not so different. I'm hoping it'll be okay.
Mr. Hensley?
I just have a couple, really, observations. I'm not even sure they're questions. But my first, my first statement is, this morning, when I asked for, it seems like three days ago. Actually, that's not true, but doing the people's work is never a burden. Anyway, so really, what I'm interested in, and it's beyond the scope of this, I just asked in the context of this. I think that, you know, we need to know what the price tag is for offering mental health services within Moore County schools. And obviously, it goes far beyond. This is the delta to implement this plan on top of what we already provide. It would be nice to have a number that, here's what mental health services cost, but we'll save that for another day. I would like, I would like to say this. Even though we had an explanation of this plan, I still don't understand it. And, you know, I haven't sat down and taken, you know, a couple hours, or an hour or so, to go through it. But, you know, there's a tip this morning, well, from here down is action. But then I got to some stuff that, well, from there down wasn't action. It seems like there was an action section. I would like to, I would urge my fellow school board members. Ms. Thompson asked, when is this due? It's due September 15th. I think that we should table this so that we have more time to, as a board, to really read it and understand what we're signing up for. And look, if we read it and we conclude, okay, it's just an administrative report of what we're doing and what we're going to do within the context of what we're already doing, great, then we can improve it next month. But I'm not in a position right now to say, I know enough about this to vote yea or nay. But I do know it's important enough that I should understand it well enough to say, yes, I endorse this, or no, I don't.
Are you making a motion to table?
Yes, so I will make a motion to table this until the next board meeting.
One second.
There's been a motion made to table the consideration of the state-required mental health plan. It's been appropriately seconded. Is there discussion?
Yeah, let me echo what Mr. Hensley said. But, because one of the problems is that we got this, all of this, on Friday, was it, I believe?
Thursday.
Thursday. And, you know, I don't think I saw it until Friday. And this is quite a thing to go over and quite a thing to understand. Now, I do understand that panorama was figured into this in the past, but you're telling us that it is not going to figure into it in the future. Am I correct on that?
So, if you, let me try to give you the big outline. It took me a long time to get through it, too, to figure out what they wanted at each spot. So I understand that for sure. The first part is the needs assessment, and it's asking for data from each of those, any data we have as part of our needs assessment in order to inform where we needed to improve. So we used our old panorama data to inform our action items needed. So I put panorama in there for what we had done previously, just to let them, you know, to let them know that we had had this training, and we did use that data, the survey data, to inform our action items. Just like I used the SHAPE assessment, for example. So using the SHAPE assessment is looking at our overall health assessment system. And from that, we concluded that we needed that, the frontline management system, which we'd known already, that just formalized it, because we definitely need a way to track our students and be able to help them when they need the help. So the first part is simply a needs assessment, and then that informs our action items. So then the second part is, what are you doing already? And so those are the things that we've already been doing, like, for example, the signs of suicide. We've been doing that. So that's the second area that are, with our current initiatives. And then, starting on the page six, is the aligning with the infrastructure. And so I aligned with the things that we were doing with, showing that we were in alignment with the rest of the schools. So we, I mentioned the I-Ready system during that part where it was talking about the academics, because it's important to look at the whole child. And so we want to be able to have a spot where we can look at, looking at the child's academics as well as the child's mental health needs, so that we can take good care of the students. So that's where that came in. And so that was aligning it together to the infrastructure. So the four components really- So, the four components really of it are our universal supports, so it's kind of like the MTSS multi-tiered systems of supports. There's the universal support that all kids get, which is teaching them about being responsible and getting along with others and making responsible decisions, teaching them good academics, and then also, the big, the biggest change for Moore County schools is this training, the required training program. And that's part of the step one, the universal supports, because all the, all of the people who work with the, with the kids are required to have this six-hour training program. That's why it's considered in tier one or the core supports, because all the, all the staff who contact the kids would have that. That's the biggest change. The other things we've had. Then the tier two component is supplemental support. So, when there is a student who looks like they're struggling a little bit, the teacher notices this child seems to be a little bit off today, needing a little more TLC, you know, checking in a little bit more, then that's our supplemental support, seeing the counselor. And then, the third, the third tier is the kids who need more intensive supports, and those are almost always referred out to community members, and that's just a matter of a referral. But we, it's, what they wanted us to do was have relationships with our referral sources.
Not community members, community agencies.
Community agency, thank you. Community partners, thank you.
I understood what you said.
And so, we have good relationships with them, so that when we refer a student to Santos Pediatrics, for example, we can call up Katie Tucker, and we have permission to share with the parents, and we say, Katie, this is what we see, and she's saying, this is what we see, how can we help? And then we can offer a continuum of care for the students.
Did you leave parents out on purpose until just now, or where do the parents fit in, in these, in this continuum?
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hensley.
Yes, thank you. As soon as, as soon as there's an issue, I mean, parents are involved with the, with the core instruction, and the parents, if there is an issue at tier two, then parents are involved at that point as well. And that's always the first step, is to, the teachers are asked to call the parents, and then if there still continues to be concerns, then counselors can do, and social workers can do some follow-up. So, excuse me for leaving out the parents.
Is it possible that perhaps the parent comes to us?
Absolutely.
That I remember happening frequently, and most often, the teacher and the parent are at their wits' end, and they're asking for help together.
Asking for help.
Does this happen more frequently or less frequently than, than otherwise?
Teacher referrals versus self-referrals. You know, I can't, I don't know that it takes...
By the time the teacher makes a referral, is the parent aware there's a problem?
Oh, absolutely.
That's what I'm getting at.
If the teacher has a concern, then the teacher's first response is to check with the kid and check with the parent.
But, but still, I'm going to go back to my original question, and by the way, I appreciate this, because I'm, I'm learning all the time.
No, it's a lot.
Okay, there's a lot to learn, and one of the things, I appreciate you and your staff staying with us on this very, very, very long day. It's above and beyond, you know. But it, first of all, is panorama or the survey system an integral part going in the future? Talking about in the future. Do you see that as an integral part of this mental health program?
The panorama is, and if you, if you want to say something about that, you go ahead.
Let me just say, yes, surveying is a part of the mental health plan and...
That's what I thought.
...continuing to connect with our students and ask them how they're doing and getting feedback from them. So, just the simple answer is yes, sir.
Okay.
I would add, too, that surveys are an integral part in our evaluation of these programs. We have educators handbook that tells us the number of discipline referrals that we have, it tells us the number of suspensions that we have, and it gives us the, and the number of in-school and out-of-school suspensions, the number of other interventions, such as Anthony. It tells us how we respond, but it also tells us what the nature of the problems are. The shape, excuse me, what's the one with the nurses use?
The frontline.
Frontline. That, that gives us a sense of what the, what the, what kind of barriers are confronting our students, what are some of the things that make it hard for them to learn. And then, then we have interventions that we can do at the local level, and then we got to know when to call for help and to have partner agencies to work with. So, the intention here is identifying children who have obvious difficulties with, with learning, because they're distracted by something, and then we just try to find some way to get them, get that resolved, so we can get their attention back on, on their core content. So, surveys are a way that we get macro information about students, so we can evaluate, you know, what are our needs, and make that assessment. And we talk about that data. We assess that data. There's a lot of the data that doesn't inform us at all, and we move on, but then there are certain areas that show red flags, and that enables us to target what it is that we're doing, and then once we do target it, we can find out later if it worked or not. Take away surveys, we're left with, what, educators handbook? I mean, you asked for ways that we evaluate these programs today. You take away surveys, yeah, you take away surveys, but you're limiting our very capacity to answer your very question.
My, my concern is this. My concern is that through these surveys and through these platforms, we're doing a, and six hours of training for teachers, we're doing a massive MMPI, or something similar, to, with, with all of our students, a mass psychoanalysis of all of our students, and that, to me, is extremely invasive. I'm concerned that I want, I, one person once said, well, we've got to check the kids who have quirks in their personality. Those quirks are individualism, and viva individualism, you know. I, I, I don't want a mental health program which is going to do a mass psychoanalysis of our, of our children just for attending schools. That's, I, I don't, I want our, our schools to be a place of reading and writing, and, and healthcare should be done, I believe, elsewhere.
So, just to clarify that, that the, that the SEL survey is not a psychoanalysis, or it's simply asking how comfortable they feel at school, so that we know what we can change. And so, the MMPI is much more...
No, I, I understand. I understand, I understand that.
And then the training for the teachers is, is a matter of explaining how to do a safe, a safe classroom and make the kids feel comfortable, and how to notice when a student with mental health issues having a problem, and how to, how to manage the classroom appropriately, and then, you know, triage the students who need more supports, and...
And how to engage the parent.
And how to engage the parent, yes, yes. And also remembering that public schools has long had, embraced, social emotional learning and health for, for a long, long time, decades. There's guidance standards that have students, that were responsible for teaching students about career awareness and responsible decision-making, how to get along with others, how to manage yourself, there's healthful living standards, there's the safe and healthy schools, and there's the whole child, so it's, it's, there's a lot of, you know, a lot of initiatives out there from the state and even the federal level that does, you know, does support the idea that having healthy, emotionally solid kids learn better. They learn their academics better, they're more successful in school, they're more successful in college and career. There's even some research that shows that the kids that have engaged in direct social emotional learning actually have better salaries after a couple of years out of school.
Okay. We're not going to resolve the philosophical discussion tonight, okay? And there will be a line-by-line item budget analysis, and the, that information will be available at that time. What the superintendent has recommended is the board's endorsement of a plan that's required by the state.
Mr. Dennison had a question.
Okay.
No, that's, that's okay.
Yeah, and so, I, what I want to do is, if tabling it will just give the board more confidence to look at the information that's available, I think there's a Cliff's Notes version that Ms. Dedman has presented tonight with the dollar signs off to the side. Mr. Hensley, you'll see that you were headed in the right direction when you started at five million, and you're moving down.
Well, again, I, I think the difference was, I was talking about the comprehensive costs of mental health, not just the...
But the mental health plan itself, now you can see, is a little bit different. It's a piece of that, and, and so, there, the state has something in mind that it wants to see us doing, and so, these are the things that, that address what that criteria is on that template. And so, that template is not a reflection of all counseling and all social work activity and all psychologist activity, because our psychologists do a lot of testing, special eligibility testing as well. So, there's a recommendation on the table, Madam Chair. We need to have the plan submitted to the state in September. We do need to be in a position where, if we're going to provide, what, what training we are going to provide to teachers needs to be ready for when the teachers arrive in August. Is that correct? All right, so, without board endorsement, we're in an awkward position where the state is requiring a plan that, that we, we need to have in place in order to execute that when teachers come back.
Are there any additional questions or comments?
I just have one thing to clarify. Sorry to say... So, the question was asked, is panorama, is panorama required for this plan? And it was answered, yes, but I, I think the more correct statement is survey, is surveys with data analytics and the ability to analyze them is required, not necessarily a given platform.
You're required to have an assessment...
Sure.
...that informs the programs you execute, and then an assessment to see if they worked or not. And, and my assertion as superintendent is, is that you need a survey platform for that.
Correct, but it's not necessarily panorama.
It's not necessarily panorama, and yes, sir. That's the next item on the agenda.
And I was going to mention that, it doesn't have to be, just because it says panorama before, because it's, it's kind of like a menu is what I'm looking at it. So, it's an improvement plan, it tells you what, what we've done, what our strengths are, what our needs are, and then it continues to go down of what we continue to plan on doing. So, to me, it's just basically right there in front of you. I don't think we need to wait on it. I don't, at the end, it's, it's saying that we need surveys, not necessarily has to be panorama, but that's just what we were, we had in, you know, before. So, I think that's probably why it was there. So, I, I vote for that. We just, we vote yes, or go forward on this.
All right, we have a motion that's been appropriately seconded, which is to table the, what's it called? The mental health plan.
Mental health plan.
Yeah, I might need a little mental health.
It's a little.
Yes, and so, we will need to proceed to vote on that motion, so...
May I make one other comment before?
Certainly, Mr. Dennison.
Just, this won't preclude us from still letting administration know if we find things in there before, you know, it really goes full-scale, so this will not delay what, and the, the teacher training is going to be first aid, yeah, I think first aid, mental health first aid, which I went through myself. We'll still get an opportunity to let the administration know if we don't agree with everything that's in there, or specifically what we don't agree with.
Are there other comments? All right, then let us proceed to vote. All those in favor of tabling the approval of the mental health plan until the meeting in August, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries, or motion is defeated for three. Let us now move on to item C, which is the survey platform contract.
Madam Chair.
No, we need a vote for it.
So, you've taken no action.
That's right. Sorry, I'm moving on.
Didn't table it, but it's still, the item's still on the agenda.
What time is it? Okay, so, we have not tabled it, so is there another motion?
A motion that we move forward.
To approve the...
To approve it, yes.
Mental health plan. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there further discussion?
I just want to clarify one thing, and this was discussed earlier this morning, is that there are no, this is just to reassure people who may not have been tuned in earlier, and that is, there are no implied tasks, and there is no additional authorization in this plan. It's continuation of what we're currently doing.
That is correct. And we are currently educating the whole child. All right, so, we will now, we now have another motion on the floor, which is the approval of the mental health plan. Barring any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
I believe that carries, did you vote?
Yeah.
Okay.
I was wondering, too.
Four to three.
I don't know.
Motion carries four to three. All right, now we'll move on to the survey platform contract, and we have discussed this at great length this morning, and of course, we've heard quite a few speakers. Mr. Levy feels very passionately about it, and has mentioned he wants to passionately speak again, but are there others who might like to speak before we let him be passionate?
I would. It's all over before you, how about that?
Mr. Holmes?
It won't be long, just stay brief, Bob.
I'll stay brief, but I, I'll defer to, there were some people that wanted to speak.
Yeah, I actually do have something, and I don't mind if I can go ahead and read it. Just make sure I was on. Last month, I wanted to put a hold on the renewal of the panorama contract, because we were, we're just going around in circles with this conversation, and frankly, it wasn't going anywhere. First, let me apologize to Seth. My intention was not to put more work on your plate. Frankly, my intention was to stop the conversation that wasn't going anywhere, and I have trust in the school system and certainly do not want to micromanage you at all, so I wanted to apologize to you. Putting the renewal on hold also gave me time to check out why some parents were linking CRT with panorama. I also wanted to do some research on other programs out there, and I will say, many, like Skyward, I checked out, Blue, Survey Monkey, I even checked out Qualtrics, had many great qualities, and they all, they all gave you that one big platform, but many of them were, like you said earlier, were business-oriented, they weren't just school-oriented. I really spent hours researching panorama. In fact, I was up till about one in the morning one night, and my husband had to come get me. So, it's, I've really done a lot of digging and, because I see the parents had concerns with it. Aaron Fuhr, and I might be saying his name wrong, was the founder of panorama in 2012. He wanted to create a platform that, that all schools, districts could use, no matter how rich or poor their county was. Many schools that do not have the funds can never hire a consultant to look over paper data. He created this platform for all school districts to be able to use. This platform lets the county, school, and a classroom see how they are performing. It gives feedback to a teacher about their classroom and what they can do better. To date, the platform is in nine hundred school districts. The one thing I was hearing last month was it was funded by Mark Zuckerberg, whatever his name is, and he's promoting CRT because of his political agenda. Mark also gave 1.2 million dollars to stand for medicine scientists, so they can continue their study on immune diseases, and he also gave $3 billion to run the all, the Cure All Disease Project. Google, Yale, Ashton Kutcher, A-plus grade, and Soft Tech also fund panorama. My point is, is the how of something that gets funding, funded, doesn't matter to me. If it did, I probably wouldn't be eating at a few restaurants or shopping at a few stores right now. What matters the most to me is if it is providing something that is useful and beneficial for our school system. Panorama makes it possible to see how students are doing across math, literacy, core academics, attendance, behavior, and college and career readiness, so educators can coordinate action to support every child. Panorama is partnered with Kindness Counts, which is about character education. All of this lets teachers have a 360-degree view of each student to understand what they need and how to help them thrive. School and district leaders can interact with the data as a macro level to understand performance trends. Educators can also go from identifying a struggling student to building an intervention plan right in panorama and monitoring the progress over the course of the intervention cycle. Panorama helps schools measure, measure non-academic factors like the social emotional learning, safety, belonging, and family engagement. Some reason, SEL and CRT are getting coupled together, but I will go over what that looks like in Moore County schools. I saw some of the questions that were floating around, and some, some were from other schools districts, which, I'm sorry, some were from other school districts may have used, and some of the questions that I saw stemmed from a risk behavior survey that the old board did not approve of, and we did not use. Moore County Schools does a great job for letting parents know, I'm not sure where people were getting that we didn't, because we allow them to view the questions at, at the school online, they even commented through the parent portal, and paper copies were sent home in folders stating that there was, will be a survey, and all, and also, an all-call goes out to your, from your school, followed by an email. At any time, you can opt out of the survey. At any time, you can opt out of the surveys. Now, if some parents are saying that the teachers are making the students take the survey, then they need to be addressed to the principal and the Board of Education. Nothing will be corrected or solved if the administration doesn't know about it. I looked at our September 2020 board meeting when the panorama surveys were on the agenda. All the questions were there. As I mentioned before, we do not approve we did not approve the risk behavior survey. We did not we did approve the SEL and climate culture. I printed them out right here, and if you want to see them, I can pass them around as well, or you can go on to our September meeting 2020 and look and they're all right there. I will highlight that some of our SEL questions were like this, and I kind of did through each category and I won't I'll try to make it real quick because I know it's really late. Six through 12 were asked, if you fail to reach a goal, how likely are you to try again? That was one of the questions. Another one was, how likely are you to change your way of thinking about your behavior or putting forth effort? In the past 30 days, how often did you listen to other points of view? If you walked into a classroom upset, how many teachers would be concerned? Overall, how do you feel? I'm sorry, overall, how much do you feel you belong at your school? How often do you worry about violence in your school? That was six through 12 questions. Three through five, how often do you stay focused on the same goal for several months at a time? How often did you compliment other accomplishments? How respectful are your teachers to you? How likely will it be that someone at school will bully you online? Those were some of the SEL questions. Here are some of the one sample questions that panorama gives you on their site to use for their grades that we did not use, but they they have them on their site if you wanted to use them. Some of them were, how difficult is it to stay focused? Why don't you like what don't you like about school and what is your favorite subject? So they're very short. They're not as in-depth as I think ours were. The climate control survey was based upon if you strongly agree, agree, or disagree. Some questions were about were what grade you were in and are you treated with respect by classmates? Do you feel safe at school or do you feel students receive different punishments for breaking the same rule? There are 37 questions, so I won't go all over. Won't go into all of them. As you can see, there was nothing about CRT in those questions. Moore County School created those questions, and they may use questions from panorama, but the questions that they created have to be approved by us, the board. They also get viewed by the public. One can argue panorama has questions you can use for a survey that may be more relatable to CRT, but we do not use those questions. Like I said before, we do not put we put a hold on the risk behavior survey last September, but looking at those questions, they had nothing to do with CRT as well. They are focused on drugs, suicide, drinking, vaping, and sexual activity. Although many of the questions were uncomfortable, they didn't promote anything. In fact, the survey may be something that we may want to revisit at a later time. Our county uses panorama as we seem fit to use it. It is a tool in our toolbox. It is a platform. It's not a curriculum. Any survey for the students always gets approved by the Board of Education. I haven't even mentioned how we use it for our staff, which is a game changer, as you can see how satisfied our staff has been at our schools. I apologize for this long comment this evening on this matter, but I wanted the public to know that I did do my due diligence on this matter. I do not see anything wrong used in panorama. I saw no signs, facts, data saying that our school system, Moore County Schools, is using the platform to promote CRT. I do not care what other counties may use it for around us or even that our oh, or even that our state superintendent, which he does use panorama. I just care about Moore County Schools and what we do. So thank you. Sorry for being so long.
Madam Chair, I yield, Ms. Caldwell took over my talking pole.
Sorry, I I pulled the lady.
She said exactly some of the things that I was prepared to say. So I yield.
That's that's okay. I'm not I can't object to somebody who's talking a long time.
Echo some of what Stacy said. The questions are multiple choice. They're not they're not, you know, fill in the blanks. The question she she read, there are four responses there and they pick one of the four responses.
Almost once in a while, sometimes frequently, or almost always.
Right. So, you know, it's hard to indoctrinate somebody if you have a multiple choice. They don't write down, you know, stuff. But the surveys are important. The youth the survey we would not do last year, the youth risk survey, that that has information in there, and that's the only survey that would contain the student's name. And the only reason we do that, we have to know what students are having problems. I mean, how are you going to solve a problem that students?
We don't.
Oh, Mr. Dennison, please, I need to correct you on that. No, we never have the student's name in the youth risk behavior survey.
Not that the what's your name?
The suicide survey, I believe.
The SEL.
SEL, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
The competencies portion of the SEL.
Because those questions were so univasive.
Wrong one. So it was the SEL. Students' names are not on on the other ones.
We didn't do that other one.
Right, and so there's no FERPA stuff there. But the important point is the students can opt out of the test. And as Stacy said, we need to ensure that all our teachers understand this because I too have gotten comments for the student said they didn't want to take the test and the teacher said they had to take it. So we have to make sure that's not happening. Students can opt out of all tests, correct? They have the option to opt out.
All surveys are voluntary.
All surveys we're giving, students have an opportunity. But and.
And we mean that. We thought we meant that. We've heard some stories during this recent spat of debate that we've had, and that does concern me because somehow we didn't communicate. Somehow somebody missed the memo somewhere along the line. Obviously, there's some there's some basis and truth to some of those, but we need to get that should we continue with this, we need to get that message out better that if parents don't want to opt in, then that means nobody at school should be in any way compelling the child to take take any one of these surveys.
So just the parents, the students can.
Students can too.
Excuse me, excuse me, not only the students, but the parents can opt out.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
All right, from each and every survey?
Yes. Not SEL.
Okay, no.
What is what is what is SEL?
Okay, so.
I'm sorry, yeah, you're thank you, Mr. Levy.
Yeah.
For for surveys that contain one of the eight criteria in the pupil protection amendments, pupil.
Pupil protection, privacy, rights amendment.
Okay, thank you, Neil. That relate to things such as illegal activity, which would include drugs and alcohol if you're under 21, right? Or sexual activity, political affiliations. There are eight different criteria. So if there are any questions involved in the survey that contain that type of content, parents must be given the option to opt out. Okay? All of our surveys are voluntary. So because our SEL survey and our climate and culture survey do not contain any of that protected criteria as content, we're not required to let parents opt out, although again, they are all voluntary. Any student who sits there and says, I'm not going to take it, they sit there and they don't take it. However, moving forward, if the board feels like we would like for parents to be allowed to opt out of any survey, you know, we'd be glad to to move in that direction.
Yeah, I think that's the first thing.
But that's but.
It's going to get confusing.
I would just like to point out, and I'm rarely in this role, that the policy concerning how we administer surveys and the and whether people can opt in and opt out is beyond the scope of this particular adoption of this platform.
You're exactly right. Mr. Dennison, did you have additional comments or questions?
No, no, no additional ones.
Do you have any?
No.
I just, again, I want to point out a couple of things that were discussed this morning that some of them are not on the brief and and two things. One is that that the that Moore County Schools is not going to purchase the professional development portion of panorama. Therefore, we're only purchasing the survey and data analytics portion. That's the first thing. And the second thing is, and this has already been pointed out, is even if this is approved today, this doesn't approve the surveys, as Ms. Caldwell pointed out and as all the board members know from previous meetings. But the public needs to understand is if this is adopted today, then that again, approval for any given survey rests with the board. So anyway, I just want to make those two points.
With student surveys, we we do have the sample questions, the teacher working condition survey we use with our teachers and the classified working condition survey, we use it for for that. We we hope that we can continue to do that.
Correct, correct, right.
And just to clarify, I heard a comment from one of the speakers about parents seeing the surveys. The surveys are online, the surveys are in the schools, and, you know, we don't say you can't take it. I mean, they have and and this is weeks in advance before the survey is ever given. So it's not like something we're given the survey, here's a survey, we're going to give it next week. It's never like that. The dates are known well in advance, and we have 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 weeks for the parents and ourselves to look at them for.
For the past three years, what we've done is we come to the board and seek the board's endorsement of the surveys and to seek parent and community input on the surveys. We spend the next month with the surveys posted online and invite community feedback. And then we come back the next month with that feedback for the board, and then the board has made their decision as to whether we move forward.
All right, Mr. Levy.
Yes, just one thing, and I'll say it now. So I'll make sure I'm at least six days, six working days ahead of time or whatever that number is. I would hope that at our next board meeting, we place it on the agenda that a resolution that parents or or children may opt out of any survey they wish. And that then that a form be designed if if that's appropriate to send home to say ahead of a survey, here's your opt-out form. You can opt out or opt in, whatever you want to do.
And I'll support that, sir.
Okay.
Rather than on the agenda, would that not be something to send to policy?
No, I don't think it's a policy.
Mr. Ramy?
If you wish to have adopt it as board policy, but I don't know that it's strictly necessary to.
I mean, a resolution wouldn't carry any weight, though.
I mean, the the board could simply take action, approve a motion to direct the administration to take certain action. That would be.
And a policy could follow.
And a policy could follow.
But I would like before we start our next school year, next school year, because while I'm going to vote against this, I I don't know, I have the feeling that that's going to pass. But but still, I think it could be made stronger by by having this resolution.
I'll get with you and we'll figure out what what the topic in the executive summary should be.
Sort of like what we did with our policies.
Just real quick, Madam Chair. Just listen to what Mr. Levy, if I understood it correctly, is revisiting our survey policy.
Our survey, our opt not the surveys themselves, but the opt-out, opt-in.
Understand. So I think there's broad interest on the board to take a look at that, at least the new members. So my suggestion would be we put it on the agenda at a future time. It needs to be timely, and we get a brief on what the previous policy is. We have a discussion as to what we'd like to see, and then we can refer it to committee after there's been a brief and kind of everyone's thoughts, and then let the committee kind of take all that in consideration and come back with changes in policies. Right.
And I'll get with Mr. Levy and we'll figure out what direction we're going.
And I'm prepared to direct that administratively in the meantime.
Okay, that would be fantastic.
End of discussion, and then it's a matter of building the framework around it.
All right, but let me.
I was just going to call go ahead with the question.
I just I I feel I have to answer Ms. I feel I have to answer the the previous arguments. Basically, we've been talking about a survey, but panorama is not just a survey platform. It's sort of like saying, you know, we want to we want to have this wonderful book called To Serve Man. It's a cookbook. If those those people, those people are either old enough to remember The Twilight Zone or those who watch the Sci-Fi Channel, understand what I mean. The the bottom line is that that.
No, we don't.
That panorama is not SEL. It is not social and emotional learning. It is transformative SEL. And I'm using their their term, not my term, transformative SEL. And what you are buying when you buy panorama is a whole program, including webinars. And while we are not going to purchase the professional development portion of of panorama, those webinars are free. And what you do with the webinars is if a child is is, for instance, falls to a certain level on some sort of arbitrary social, emotional, social, emotional gradient, then you're supposed to send them to these webinars. And these webinars discuss everything from so-called social, emotional learning, but they include anti-racism, which is another way of saying racism in our dystopian world. I I also underline the fact that if you look at panorama's website, the first thing that you see are their proud association with the San Francisco Unified School System and the New York City School System. These are not school systems which we want to emulate. And what what happens if you listen to some of the webinars, because I've signed up for some of the webinars, and what they are are leftist-leaning, so-called anti-racist dogma, which which believe, and I'm I'm using their terms, that that students are oppressed and because they are because they are oppressed, they need to the the Caucasian children need to understand their oppression. And the children of color need to understand that's the reason why they're oppressed and that we so-called help them out of their oppression. Nothing is farther from the truth. We are all given an equal opportunity here, and that is what our goal must be. Panorama is out of sync with the goals of the Moore County School System. Panorama, as I've said before, and I'll say just one more time, their particular trainer for that trained Wake County and also trains other, I'm going to say it because because they're proud of it. They're proud, and and this trainer is proud, of her association with with economic development in Cuba. And right now, there are riots going on in Cuba because because in that, and I'm using John Kennedy's words, that imprisoned island is a place where people swim or try to swim 90 miles and drown trying to come to our shores. This is not the kind of company that we want Moore County tax dollars to go to. And more importantly, what they their their surveys, their seminars, their entire program, because it is an entire program, is not something that Moore County should be a part of. We need to push back. We need to vote no. We need to say we'll take another platform, but we need to send a message to to our taxpayers that we're not going to go along with this social, emotional learning, which is which is transformative social, emotional learning, which is trying to transform our children. I don't want to transform our children. I want our children to transform us by equal opportunity and by our by our children using that equal opportunity to to become better than we are and to achieve higher and and to achieve their their loftiest goals. That's that's what I want, and and I want someone who will support both America and our capitalist system, not not the socialist system of Cuba. Submit.
We'll keep that woman out of here. Now, do we do webinars?
No, it's just one point of clarification on that in that we we do not, to my knowledge, at no point has any student ever assigned to take a webinar from panorama. No students are assigned to take webinars.
And we have a new policy to do.
It's part of the point we made this morning was that the webinar, the access to that was made voluntary for teachers. It happened it was listed on a menu.
It's a choice for teachers.
It was it was listed on a menu. That was true when Mr. Hennessy pointed that out, but it's certainly not one that we've initiated effort to to move people towards. We did have the training webinars, and that's, excuse me, the training webinars that we will not do in the coming year.
And 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 one of the one of the problems is, as the person, as I pointed out earlier, if you if the camel's nose gets in starts to get in the tent, the rest of his body is is likely to follow. And by the way, they also have. And by the way, they also have social, they also try to do social, emotional learning for teachers. Okay, it is an entire program of transformative social, emotional learning. It is not what Moore County Schools should be doing.
And because the board has the, you have the discretion to approve or deny the survey, so if it's something that the board's not comfortable with, you can certainly make those changes.
Madam Chair, call a question.
I make a motion that we follow the recommendation provided to use the Panorama platform.
It was their second.
Second.
All right, the motion was made by Ms. Thompson, seconded by Mr. Dennison. Barring any further discussion, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of the adoption of the survey platform Panorama, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
All right, the motion carries four, three. All right, we'll move on now to item D, capital projects.
Madam Chair, my recommendation stands in recommending the board consider a motion to approve the two projects that were presented to you today. Mr. Levy is, defer to him on his amendment. And if there's any questions that any of the board members have with respect to that, Mr. Barath and I are available to answer them. Otherwise, we have nothing to add that we presented earlier today.
Okay, so we are returning, I think, actually just to the item of activity buses.
No ma'am, no ma'am, this is a package of two bids, I mean, two awards using ESAR funds. We package these together.
Correct, but Mr. Levy just wanted to return to the part of it.
That part of it involves activity buses.
Here's what I would suggest, Madam Chair. If someone could move to adopt the superintendent's recommendation, I can't do that. And seconded, I'll move to amend.
All right, is there a motion to?
Motion to move to adopt superintendent's recommendations.
Second.
All right, motion by Ms. Thompson, seconded by Mr. Dennison. Is there discussion?
Yes, I would move to amend the recommendation. As to the school buses, to add, in part with our $15,000 worth of savings that we're getting for having, not having to pay the price we thought we were going to pay, to add seat belts or proper restraints to those buses. Madam Chair, when a child is going 60 miles an hour on a bus and standing up in the aisle, which I know they're not supposed to do, but I've ridden buses, all our kids have ridden buses, when they're standing up in the aisle and a drunk driver hits that bus, that kid is still, and that bus abruptly stops, that child is going 60 miles an hour through that bus, and that child is going to get hurt. Seat belts have been used in automobiles since 1967. They have, they've been mandatory since 1967. They have been, they have been used prior to that. They have saved lives, they will save lives on our buses. I know we have some of the best bus drivers, and I know we try to do the most careful things possible, but students, students on buses need that extra protection. And so, I would submit that we would add seat belts to those buses.
Are there other comments or questions? Mr. Hensley, you look like you've got one.
Did you make a motion? I made a motion to amend, I think there needs to be a second.
Need to be a second.
I will second your motion, that is all.
All right, the motion for amendment to add that the extra funding remaining after the purchase of the buses would be applied towards seat belts for the activity buses. Is there discussion about this motion?
Is the superintendent be afforded to offer a recommendation on the amendment?
Certainly.
I would recommend that the board not approve the amendment, and for the reasons I stated earlier today, with all respect to my fellow Bob on the Diaz, there's an argument that can be made for restraints, and I made an argument today as to, when we look at the nature of bus accidents, the potential for fire in this case is much greater than that of impact. And there is a lot of research that does support that. But if you look at the NTSBA website, you'll see that they do not make clear recommendations on restraints, and they make reference to the need to evacuate, and that restraints might be a problem. But I can't use the NTSBA website to prove that point one way or another. What we have here is a precedent that I think we need to apply to all buses with a plan that the board commits to making sure that if you're going to put restraints on these two buses, you need a plan to eventually get them on all buses. And so, if I might use the metaphor of the camel and the nose under the tent, I think that if the board wants to invite the camel in, that's great, but I want you to be willing to pay for everything, not just these two buses. So, I would ask that if you want to go down that path, either do it right or don't do it at all.
And let me make one observation. You know, there was a car named Tucker, and then that car, they put seat belts in the 1950s.
A movie was made about that.
That's right, a movie was made about it. And the argument against seat belts was, whoa, if you put it in, and we don't put it in, and there's an accident with one of our cars, and we haven't put it in, then we're going to be found liable. Yes, you will be found liable, because the smart thing to do is to put the seat belts in. And by the way, there are two agencies of the federal government. One is the National Transportation Safety Administration, and the other is, I believe it's the National Transportation Administration. NHTSA basically recommends us, basically says that we need, that we need seat belts in buses. The other agency is not as sure. The bottom, the bottom line is that the most recent accidents of buses have carried with them recommendations for putting seat belts in buses. And in this argument, it's different for Panorama, because I think that if you start with a little bit of Panorama, you're going to get a lot of Panorama. But I got to tell you something, if you start with a little bit of seat belts, you might get a lot of seat belts, and that would be a good thing.
Madam Chair, call the question.
Call the question. Okay, at this point, and what we would be voting on is just the amendment, if I am correct. Mr. Ramy?
Correct.
All right, so the amendment was to add that the excess money saved on the purchase of the buses would be put towards seat belts on these particular buses.
Actually, that the seat belts would be, that the seat belts or proper restraints, I'm using the term seat belts, it may be seat belt and shoulder harness, or whatever a proper restraint is, that it actually be purchased.
Are there, okay, so the question's been called, I've stated the question. All those in favor of the amendment to the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
The motion fails. We now return to the original motion, which is the approval of the two capital projects with bid results. Barring any further commentary, we will proceed to vote. Is there a motion? Yeah, there is a motion, yeah, we got that, a long time ago.
I think we all just vote, I think. Everyone just voted aye to, when they meant nay as well, just.
She said opposed, so we.
That's perfectly fine.
We should have said nay.
Okay, so the motion is to approve the two capital projects. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the motion carries seven, oh. We now move on to the final, yeah, final upset bid for the old Aberdeen Primary School. I know we have people in the audience waiting to hear.
And Madam Chair, the administration has nothing to add to its presentation earlier today, but Mr. Barath and I and legal counsel are happy to answer any remaining questions board members might have.
Are there any questions?
Madam Chair, I would just like to make a comment. We heard earlier today that we began our upset bid process for Aberdeen Primary School back months ago, and I believe the figure of Mr. Barath was $120,000 that we started with. And we went through the process over months, and we have now received an offer for $473,100 from Network Commerce. And I would like to make a motion that we accept their offer.
Second, but I would ask that, how did counsel want us to word this?
Well, it's up to the board, but we do have some, the interested purchaser had sent Mr. Barath some requests for some minor, relatively minor adjustments to the purchase contract to move things along. If you can delegate to the superintendent the authority to approve any final changes on the understanding the price and the property description would remain the same. We can get this done quickly, we don't have to come back to you next month.
So, so long as the price remains the same.
Price and the property description, I think.
Yes, that would be an amendment that I would go along with, and I guess she would go along with.
So, we have a motion, and it's, it's not really even amendment, it's just that.
Well, that's the motion that I think she and I are making.
Question hasn't been called, so I forgot, I missed who made the motion.
Ms. Thompson.
If Ms. Thompson agrees with that, she could say, she could thumbs up, and that could be the motion.
Absolutely.
All right, are there any further discussions?
Would like to clarify for the public record.
Okay.
Either legal counsel or Mr. Barath, will the school board receive $473,100 for this property, or are there any deductions that will cause the board to receive less than that amount?
Just as with the sale of the Southern Pines Elementary Site, we do have a realtor fee that will be reduced from the net. And so, once we have the formal closing, as I did with the other project, I inform the board of the final closing cost, at which point my presentation would be updated to reflect that as final as well.
Can you use your microphone on?
I think it is.
It doesn't sound it, but it is.
Doesn't sound like it, okay. Thank you, John.
That's all I know.
Madam Chair, I have one question. So, I understand that during the due diligence period, the would-be purchaser has the absolute unilateral right to cancel with no penalty. Due diligence canceled during the due diligence penalty period with no penalty. What rights does Moore County Schools have to cancel the contract? If we approve it, what rights do we have to cancel it, and with what penalty?
I'd have to review the contract to answer that question. I don't, John, do you happen to know?
I'm trying to flip to the section right now.
We'd have to look it up.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't think of this earlier.
I can tell you from a real estate point.
Generally, none.
A real estate point, you have none.
Yeah, usually, usually not, right. It's the buyer's, it's the buyer's option, you know, during the purposes during due diligence, you might discover something you weren't aware of that really materially changes, you know, the deal. And it's an escape valve for the buyer.
We're locked in.
So.
Resolution 22, paragraph B, would define seller default items. Should seller fail to perform any of seller's obligations under this agreement within 15 days after receipt of written notice from buyer, or in the event of a monetary default, seven days, the buyer shall have the right to either, one, to terminate this agreement and receive a return of the deposit, or two, to specifically enforce this agreement against seller, provided however that if specific performance is unavailable, then buyer shall be entitled to pursue any other right power remedy available.
So, I think the answer's none.
Yeah.
Correct.
Because what we want is money, which is very simple to give. And what they want is a piece of property, which is kind of complex.
Right, exactly. There's a bunch of nuclear waste on the site, that changes things for the buyer, doesn't change for you how much money you're going to get.
Don't even mention that.
Please, Mr. Ramy.
But I just, I did want to make one observation. There was a young lady who came before the board, who was extremely, extremely articulate with regard to this property, and.
Still here.
She's still here.
I see her, I see her in the back, and I want to congratulate you, because you knew exactly what to do, which was to get the money together and to pay the right price, and you're going to get a school, and you're going to benefit the community, which is what you said you're going to do. And I wish that others would learn from you. I think what you did is a fabulous thing, and I'm personally happy to sell the school to your organization.
If I may, just to, to Mr. Hensley's question, I did just scan the contract. There is a default provision that, so either buyer or seller can default. If the buyer defaults in a material obligation under the agreement, then the board can terminate. That would have to be a default, like failure to pay the deposit, that sort of thing. But you do also have an ability to terminate under that provision.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, and it has been properly seconded. All those in, Mr. Levy?
No, I'm not.
Oh, no, you seconded the motion, though.
Yes, I did, yes.
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't know what you're calling it.
You seconded the motion, you're fine, no more. We're going to set a timer on Mr. Levy, you're having to get a debate timer.
I thought you wanted another speech.
No. I will say, though, you know, we've paid no attention to who was making the bids as we've done this upset bid process, because that was handled by Mr. Barath and the realtors. But I have now gone online and looked up network associates, is that the proper term?
Network commerce associates.
Network commerce associates, and you have some marvelous projects. All right, someone called the question? All right, Mr. Holmes has called the question. All those in favor proceeding with the final negotiations on the sale, allowing our superintendent and attorney to complete the sale process.
Right, on the understanding that price and property description would remain the same.
Correct. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven, oh. Congratulations. All right, let's now sell some more. The next one moves on to the Southern Pines Primary School appraisal and offer.
I will ask Ms. May to open up a new document that I just created based on the conversations that we had. This is it. There was a lot of red lines on the document in the appraisal, so I just removed those quickly and blocked them out. So, you could see from the village appraisers, again, just for clarity, as Neil tried to point out, reaching the screen earlier, what the three parcels that Village Appraisals appraised. So, you have the parcel 1A off to the right, and that's indicated in the red block to the right. You have the center double the size almost block, and that is parcels 1B through 4A, and then the one on the far left across the street has parcel 4B. So, just for clarity of everyone, again, just, there were a lot of discussion and questions on this, so if there's any confusion, hopefully this will settle that, understand the properties that were contained in the appraisal. And that's the only update that I have to the presentation from this morning.
All right, comments or questions or a motion?
Madam Chair, I have a motion.
Mr. Hensley?
First, I'd like to start off, if I could. Moore County Schools has been at this for over a year and a half. The report here says, December 2019, the school board authorized private negotiations with the Southern Pines Land Trust. Year and a half is a very long time. I want to start off by saying, from my very first meeting, I thought that there was a very natural compromise to this whole, to this whole situation. And if you listen to the residents, and I've listened intensely, from the December meeting on, I've listened to the residents of West Southern Pines, and really, everyone coming to make the case. And when you listen to the people who are truly speaking from their heart, three things came out. The importance of the auditorium to the community. That auditorium has been used for weddings, it's been used for funerals, and everything in between. Also, the four acres with the deed restrictions, even Ms. Watkins, Linda Watkins, mentioned the four acres earlier today. And obviously, and also that four acres was also the site of the Rosen, of the Rosewald School, Rosenwald School. And if I could direct everyone's attention up here, out of the 17-acre site, the four acres is there, it's labeled as parcel 1A. So, I would like to make, I'd like to make the following motion, and the motion is twofold. The motion is to authorize the superintendent and staff to, Part One, begin private negotiations with the Southern Pines Land Trust to purchase the four acres, more or less known as parcel 1A, simultaneously to begin preparing the remaining 12 acres, more or less, to sell to the highest bidder at a public upset bid.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
All right, the motion has been made by Mr. Hensley, seconded by Mr. Holmes. All right, the motion has been made by Mr. Hensley, seconded by Mr. Holmes. Is there discussion, or are there questions?
I, I would just like to make a comment, Madam Chair. I've heard, I'm with Mr. Hensley in listening to so many speakers in the community coming out, various meetings, and listening to their plea and their passion for recognizing what the Sandhills, Sandhills Housing and Trust is trying to accomplish with, with just the culture and, and the business opportunity for economic development they have in the area. I would really love to see the, the group be able to purchase that, that's property.
Comments or questions?
Yeah, and, and I agree with, like, your, your amendment, and I guess it would be a resolution, but I, I'm conflicted because I think that we should just go into private negotiations and see what really matters to them. If they want the entire one, or if they want just that little partial, and just give them, I mean, it's not that we have to approve it, but I just think that just giving them the option of both, and just kind of going into private negotiations on that, just from hearing some of the people today, I don't know if, if they want the entire property, or if they're just looking to have that one section of that four or five acres. So I'm a little conflicted.
Are there other comments or questions?
Well, yeah. I know that the, that the land trust wants the entirety of it, there's no question, that that is what they want, but unfortunately, we have to think of all the students of Moore County, as well as the interests of the, of, of the people of West Southern Pines. I think this forms a very, very good compromise, because one of the things that they're saying, that everyone is in favor of, of, of the land trust buying this piece of property at a very, very low value, so long as the children of Moore County pay for it. And that's really what's happening. I mean, let's look at the county commissioners did not give us any additional money because they thought we already had enough money, or whatever they thought. I know that we have some, some, some problems with that. The town of Southern Pines is saying, yes, we want to have this new thing in our town, but they spend a million dollars on a dog park over near the airport, and they don't, they don't offer a single dollar to the, to the children of Moore County, and to the people in the northern part of, of, of Moore County who need a roof done on their gyms, or, or to the, to the, even to Pinecrest High School, which apparently needs, needs another roof and the like. You know, I want to be generous, and I personally, I think what they're asking for is a worthwhile project, but everybody's got a worthwhile project so long as they're spending other people's money. Let's compare that to what was done here by, by the Aberdeen Primary School. At the Aberdeen Primary School, some people with, 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 I think, equally important community objectives said, okay, we'll raise the money, and we'll pay, we'll, we'll enter into the bidding process. They just, they didn't want to be political. They wanted to do what was necessary, to raise the kind of money that was necessary, and quite frankly, we didn't know, I don't think I knew anything about them. They said, we're good enough that we can raise the money, and we can enter into that competitive bidding process. I think that if the land trust had done that, and concentrated on, 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 on doing that, they'd have an entire piece of property by now. They didn't. The first thing that they did was, they said, oh, the appraisal that we got is too low, and we're going to go after the appraiser's license. That's what they did. They said, because we don't like the appraisal, we're going after the appraiser's license. And when that didn't work out, they used the guy's, the appraisal...
That they attacked.
That they attacked, exactly, to justify paying, paying a low price for the piece of property. And by the way, our appraisal, I think, is very low, because our newest appraisal is, is as of January 1 of 2021, and we all know that we're in the middle of COVID at that point in time, and if anybody has ever tried to buy a board foot of lumber, or has seen the current real estate market, if you can find a house to sell on the real estate market, okay, you know that the price of real estate has skyrocketed. So, yeah, I want to be generous, but I'm not going to be generous with, with other, with the children's money, but I do think it's a worthwhile project, and I think that if they, they also believe it's a worthwhile project, then let's enter into negotiation for the four acres. Let's give these people the four acres. Let's hope that they can make a, a, a good cultural landmark, a good cultural museum, and then let's use the rest of the property for the benefit of all the children of Moore County. And I think, I think Mr. Hensley's compromised. It doesn't make everybody happy. It doesn't make me happy, because I wanted that entire property capped, because I believe that it's necessary for the expansion of our schools, and especially for our pre-K, and especially for additional space at Pinecrest. But I believe if we'll all compromise a little bit, we can all get something, and it will benefit the children overall. Submit.
So, hold on a minute. Are there other comments over this way? I don't want to overlook. All right, Mr. Hensley?
So, just to clarify, I don't, I don't want, I don't want one of Mr. Levy's comments to get everyone's hopes up. You said, give it to them, you meant sell it to them.
I mean, I mean, sell, yes.
Thank you, okay, so now I've corrected that.
I'm using a euphemism.
So, the, the, the two-pong compromise, I was willing to leave it at that, but now that we're opening up discussion of, of perhaps something else, then I feel the need to make a few more comments. And the first comment I'm going to start off with is something that I said at the very first meeting, and I've said it publicly several times, and that is, no one has done more for the residents of West Southern Pines than the Moore County Board of Education and the Moore County taxpayers. The Moore County Board of Education and the Moore County taxpayers just built a $33 million brand-new school on the doorsteps of West Southern Pines. The Moore County Board of Education and the Moore County taxpayer paid, paid to connect Carlisle Street to Morganton Road. The Moore County School Board, we sold Southern Pines Elementary to a community, a public community charter school, whose specific mission is to assist lower social economic children. Unfortunately, many of those come from the Western Pines area. So, so, the Moore County Board of Education, the Moore County taxpayers, and the children of, of Moore County have done more, more for West Southern Pines than anyone else in this county. As, as Mr. Levy pointed out, Southern Pines, their mayor came here, cried crocodile tears, and then left, but she didn't offer up a dollar to help this, while at the same time they were spending millions of dollars to buy a glorified dog park. So, we've done enough. Other issues are, and these, these go directly to the point, is evaluation. Some of the uses of the property that Southern Pines Land Trust that have proposed, such as restaurants, commercial shops, and this and that, changed zoning. So, all of a sudden, okay, let's talk change of zoning. If, if the intention is to change it to commercial, then half a mile, 600 yards up the road, certainly no more than half a mile, land, commercial land is selling for 3/4 of a million dollars an acre. So, I would submit that the Southern Pines Land Trust wants to buy it zoned FFR, change the zoning to commercial, which we already know there's the 20-acre parcel that's valued at $13 million, that's in, that adjoins West Southern Pines, and we know that property in Morganton Park, half a mile away, sells between 3/4 of a million, a million dollars an acre. So, if the Southern Pines Land Trust wants to buy 17 acres and rezone it for these other purposes, then we are doing a disservice to the Moore County taxpayers. The other thing, and I can't help but point this out, if you look at the GIS, there's four acres right across the street owned by Church of Our Lord Jesus Christ of Apostolic Faith, right across the street. So, why don't somebody approach them and talk to them about buying their four acres? So, this cannot all be done on the back of the Moore County taxpayers, and the back of the Moore County Board of Education. We've done our part. I think this is a great compromise. There's four acres as part of the original restricted deed, is where the Rosenwald School is, there's the auditorium, there's the administrative building, there's 2/3 of a gym, and 2/3 of a classroom building.
Are there other comments, questions? I normally, I try not to weigh in, but I will say I, I truly stand on the side of the land trust. I admire the proposals, the proposals that they have put forth. They are very far-reaching, they may or may not be reachable, but the, the planning is there, and I commend Mr. Gordon and the troops that have stood with him through whatever long process this has been. I, I too, like Mr. Levy's question, where is the town of Southern Pines in this? I won't mention a, a dog park, I think it's a nature preserve, but, you know, I, I think if, if the town really is concerned about their continued well-being and growth and economic status, and becoming and remaining a world, world-class resort, mid-south resort, as they, as it's called, they need to step up to the plate as well, and this would be an opportunity that, that the town could dig into its coffers, and perhaps come aboard with the Southern Pines Land Trust, and show this, that side of town that, that you are a part of things, and make something of this moment to help a very fine group take another step forward. So I do question where the town has been, and why there has not been more support forthcoming from the actual government of Southern Pines.
Libby?
Yes, sir.
I, I would like to make a comment, too. I, I was really torn with this decision, really tough decision for me, but unlike what a lot of the political people are doing, parties are doing, I think we have a compromise, we had to make a compromise, not one way or the other, but at least now the compromise is that there, there are four acres there. You won't be able to plant everything you have before, but at least there are four acres there on, on the property with the 1924 deed, that you can do something with, because, and the other, we, we do get the finances for what we need for the kids. So, it was a compromise agreed. I'm not happy with doing either one, but I'm happy with doing something.
Is there any further discussion?
Madam Chair, if I could just ask Mr. Hensley for clarification, if the board's going to prepare to vote on the motion. There was a two-part motion, the second part was to...
Can he read, read the whole motion?
I, I don't have it verbatim, but it was something to the effect of, to authorize the superintendent and, and attorneys to begin negotiating with the trust for the sale of, of what's been designated here as parcel 1A.
Let's, let me go back to Mr. Hensley and let him repeat that again.
And then the second, the second part was, and we can get the exact wording, but my question is, the second part was to begin preparing the remainder of the site for upset bids. I assume that that is just preliminary, you don't want us to actually put the site out for bids yet while we're in discussions with the trust, I assume, because if, if it doesn't work out with the trust, you'll have more land to sell, you may have an entire parcel. So, or, or are you saying you want to, you want to go ahead and, and start the upset bid process? I would assume it's a two-stage.
Well, go ahead.
Well, we can't, we can't start the upset bid process, because we're not going to give them half of an administrative building or 3/4 of a gym. What we're going to have to do is we're going to have to negotiate with them to do a lot line adjustment, so that they can get the entirety of the buildings within their four acres, so it may be four and a half acres, and at that point, then we will be able to, to put for upset bid the remainder of the property, but it has to, has to be a two-step process.
That's what I had assumed, it was, it was a two-stage, not, not do these at the same time, because you'd be getting ahead of yourself.
And, and Mr. Levy's got the justification correct, because depending upon the negotiations of parcel 1A, there could be some minor lot line adjustments.
Right, got it.
Okay, so the motion is to, you want to read it again?
Well, I'm just, I would, I would say to authorize the superintendent and staff and board attorney to begin to negotiate with the trust for the sale of parcel 1A, and to initiate, take initial steps to prepare to put the remainder of the site for upset bids at a later date.
All right, barring any further discussion, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of the resolution as presented, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries 5-2. Caldwell and Carter abstaining, or not abstaining voting, no.
It's, it's getting late.
Oh, it is getting late.
Question for legal counsel, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
When we negotiated the sale of the Montessori, of the Southern Pines Elementary School to the Montessori School, the board gave us some parameters for negotiation.
Yep.
Do we need that as an act of the board, or do we proceed with the appraisal?
That's a great question. Yeah, well, at this point, we, we, we don't, that's a good question, the board can take further action. I mean, as I understood, the motion was to negotiate, which means, the board's not saying, go ahead and sell it to them for whatever the superintendent thinks is a good price. We would negotiate and come back to you with the best offer we could. The board could certainly set some parameters on that. You could say, no less than, you know, X amount, or set other parameters on, on our, on our authority to negotiate. That's up to the board.
And that's only if the board desires.
Correct.
But I, I, I would just leave it to counsel.
As is, we, we get you the best deal we can, and we come back.
Get the best deal, then come back, and then, we're, we're not asking you to ink the deal. We're, you bring it back to us, and we'll see if it's a good deal. If it's not, I, I don't know.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you.
All right. Can we take a five-minute break? I hate to say that, but I got to get up and move. Just five minutes, it's, it's 11 o'clock. At 11:05, we start back. We are recessed for five minutes.
(inaudible)
All right, we have two final items on our board action. The next one is our position on the state mask mandate. We did a great deal of discussion with this during our work session and heard from our board attorney about legalities associated with it, and I think that through our work session, we arrived at the decision that Mr. Levy is going to succinctly explain.
Basically, yeah, basically, I think this is a compromise. It is not all that I want, and it's not all that... It is more than perhaps some other people want. But what I would suggest is, and what I would move, is that we have a jointly signed letter where all the members of the board who wish to do so may sign, essentially urging the governor to change his mask mandate, but reserving our right to declare, especially at our next meeting, that masks are optional, which if the governor does not do anything, and I understand that the governor sometime in the middle of this month will revise his mask plan one way or another, so we don't want to jump the gun. So the letter would be from our board, whereas the Moore County Board of Education is fully capable of regulating persons within its buildings and vehicles, and whereas the Moore County Board of Education and not the governor is best prepared to make such decisions, whereas the governor pursuant to his emergency powers and through the Health and Human Services Toolkit has ordered that children and certain school personnel wear masks without the concurrence of the Council of State, whereas it's no exigent emergency now exists that prevents the Moore County Board of Education from properly regulating mask-wearing, whereas SB 220, which by the way is the legislative act which enacted the toolkit, whereas SB 220 has by its own terms expired, whereas most venues allowed, allow masked optional attendance by children and adults, including but not limited to cinemas, sports venues, and public gatherings. The Moore County Board of Education requests that the governor remove all mask mandates from the public schools and allow local boards of education to regulate pedestrian attendance and other attendance in its public school buildings, including but not limited to the right to make face masks optional. Moreover, Moore County Schools reserves the right to make such masking optional at our next business meeting or at any time the board deems fit. And that would be the letter that we would send to the governor. And if the governor does not act, why then I would intend to make a motion to make masks optional at our next board meeting.
Making this in the form... Excuse me. Are you presenting that in the form of a motion?
Yes, I am.
If I may just...
The first portion of it. I'm not saying that anybody agree with me right now to...
So the motion is that the chair draft a letter which will be signed by members of the board.
That was going to be my question. Mr. Levy just read a specific language, and I hadn't seen... There are a few things I would tweak a little.
Well, it's not in letter format.
That's the gist of it, but it would be the motion is to authorize the chair and superintendent.
I would authorize the chair to send a letter roughly to this effect. I would give the chair, Lee, well, she's an English teacher, literary license, but not too much, literary license to do what she deems best.
Word economy. All right, Mr. Locklear? Dr. Locklear? Is there a second? Okay, everybody's eating now. Is there a second?
My second. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Motion by Mr. Levy, second by Ms. Thompson. Is there further discussion?
The only discussion I would, the only points I would make is the letter should go out by the end of this week. And the other thing is, I would appreciate if it got staffed around because I've got some bullets I would like added. So, you know, you can choose how to do it. You can send out bullet points and, hey, are these what you want? And then we can add it, but, you know, we got to rapidly staff this because then we're going to have to get everyone's signature.
That's great. I will contact Ms. Potter about getting, well, it hasn't been approved yet, but about how to handle this in the best way. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven-oh. So Ms. Potter, I will be in touch with you tomorrow or within the next day. All right, we move on to our last item, which is, yeah, you're not planning to give a report, are you?
No, 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 no. Oh, oh, oh.
The superintendent's report. Did you write one?
Mr. Levy helped me draft it. It's a doozy. It's the Bob Report now.
Dr. Grimace, you're out of order. Again.
All right, so we're now moving on to the establishment of a board position on the social studies curriculum. This is as a follow-up to the resolution that we have already submitted to the governor, to our state board of education, to members, our representatives, both in the House and Senate in Raleigh, such that we are asking them to delay the implementation of the social studies standards for a term of one year and/or reserving, there's no and/or, and reserving the right to make a decision that pertains just to Moore County if such standards are not delayed. So where are we going with this?
I have a...
Got the ready one there?
Yes, I do. I would move that we delay the introduction and implementation of the curriculum, the curriculum, not the standards, but the curriculum for the new social studies standards for one year or until earlier authorized by this board. But nothing in this motion shall restrict the implementation of the new high school course requirements. And that would be the extent of the motion.
Does that cover what we would need for it to cover with the high school course changes?
I believe so. The motion, as I understand it, Mr. Levy, would be delaying the implementation of the curriculum related to the standards.
That's right.
Honestly, my initial response to that is that it's very difficult to not, how do you implement standards and not curriculum?
Well...
That would be what we'd have to really wrestle with as a staff. And Ms. Gephardt can join me if she has anything that she can maybe answer as you work through this, but that would be what we would really wrestle with there versus a recommendation from the board to delay the implementation of the standards.
Well, I would prefer to delay the implementation of the standards, but...
But I understand there's legal, that's a board discussion.
We know what the board wants, and they're trying to help us find a path that enables our teachers to be able to teach social studies, be as compliant as possible as they can with the state regulatory, the state's regulatory authority, but still recognize the complicated situation that our teachers are in right now. They're trying to help. So let's see what Ms. Gephardt thinks.
As Dr. Locklear said, what it's going to do then is they're going to have this set of standards with no guidance or support with these set of standards. So it's going to be, you've got these standards, whereas the curriculum documents would help support what the pacing and all of that that we've aligned with the standard or help and the material that we've put together are to support the implementation of those standards through providing them the curriculum.
So what you're suggesting, and the board is in this position because I've helped them get here, so I have to, I can't sit back and just listen now.
Called a tightrope.
The guns of Navarone, I hear Gregory Peck saying, "You're in it now, and you can't get out." Okay, so I'm in it. I'm just trying to help them get to a place where they can make the next more serious statement they want to make from last month, but they still recognize that our teachers need to have something that they can use to teach, and they would prefer that we proceed with the existing curriculum. They would prefer that we not be bound by the new standards in the current state of confusion that exists. But at the same time, delay implementation of the standards. And they have recognized, as you can see with Mr. Levy's draft resolution, he's recognizing that at the high school level, there's no way to avoid it because they've changed the course sequence, and that's nothing we can find a middle ground on. So what might be our best?
Just one other?
Yes.
May I make a suggestion? We could still develop the curriculum, but only implement the high school part.
Well, we have to teach social studies in K through eight, so the idea is what will the children be doing on the first day of school? What social studies will they be learning on the first day of school? And what work can Ms. Gephardt do with teachers in August to prepare them for that day? Mr. Hensley, yeah?
So it's my understanding, and again, I'm the new guy, but it's my understanding, so they mandate the new standards, we develop the curriculum. So the course of action, as I understand it, is day one, we start teaching, we teach last year's curriculum. And an interesting thing about the social study standards is there's, my understanding is, there's no end-of-grade testing for social study standards. So if we teach the existing curriculum, where's the harm, where's the foul?
Well, that's exactly, that's exactly what I was thinking. And actually, in talking to the state school board member, she was under the impression that so long as we teach social studies, that is all that is necessary. But the bottom line is, we want to teach last year's curriculum, okay? And that's how we're going to implement the newest standards as of right now, but using last year's curriculum.
May I make one other comment? Now, remember Eric Davis and Catherine Drew talked, and Catherine is going to be making a presentation at the state school board meeting in August, and they're discussing revising the present standard, so...
Well, let me put it this way. Excuse me. Can you implement last year's curriculum with this resolution? Can that be done?
Well, with this resolution, though, there is, Dr. Locklear is correct, there's the awkward, it's hard to straddle. You either have to go ahead, and I use the term "testing the waters" today. When I mean testing the waters, I don't know that you can just put your toe in. You might have to go up to your shoulders and just say, we're going to locally direct our staff to not implement the state standards, use the exist, or more positively, not word it negatively, but to continue teaching the current social studies curriculum, just stick with that, curriculum in K through eight, and to implement the new course sequence in high school. And if you stuck with just directing us to teach the existing social studies curriculum K through eight and authorized us to teach the new course sequence in high school, our folks could, that would be enough direction for us, and then you all would accept the political cover on that. I'm not looking at Neil for a reason. And then our teachers would at least get some clarity on what this board authorizes them to do going forward. And then it's between you and the state board and not necessarily between your staff and DPI.
Then that is fine, so we will, so I guess my resolution is to delay the introduction and implementation of the state standards for social studies for one year or until earlier authorized by this board, but nothing, but we're also authorizing and stating that nothing here... that nothing here shall restrict the implementation of the new high school course sequence.
Yeah, social studies course sequence.
Yes, and that, so that would be my motion. To delay the, delay the standards for a year, because quite frankly, quite frankly and absolutely, we don't know where we're going, and we don't know what we're teaching. And it's July, and, and in six weeks, we're gonna have to teach what we don't know.
Well, and they may pull the rug out from under us, they're talking, both the General Assembly and the Superintendents talking about, well, we may just, you know, call it off in the bottom of the ninth.
So, so the, so the bottom line is...
Mr. Levy, we need to get a second for your motion before we continue with discussion. Is there a second? And would, can you re, I, I know what your motion is, so it's to delay the implementation of the social study standards.
And it could be that, it could be that, or it could be to direct the staff to employ the local curriculum, to continue using the local social studies curriculum through the next year, and then, then your statement is not as direct about not teaching the state standards. If you choose to do that, that's fine, but, but I...
But she, what, what she just said is, she, that's something that they can't follow, and, and, and I understand that, because...
The original, the original motion you noted was kind of you doing both at the same time.
Right, right, you, you can't do that, right.
Just making a motion that said implement 2021 curriculum, continue to utilize that for the next school year in K eight is a more clear motion.
Yeah, agree.
And, and then to move forward with the course sequence in the high school that we have to do, that doesn't prohibit that, that's a more clear motion, that doesn't have our feet in both, both ballfields.
Okay, it's a decent compromise, and so moved, especially because it's so late.
Mr. Hensley, are you seconding then? Is that...
Yes.
Okay.
I have a question. So if it's mandated, aren't we breaking the law if we don't?
You don't ask Neil.
Well, so, I mean, we've had some closed session discussions about the difference between the standards and the curriculum, I'd rather not, you know, sort of hash that out and open, but I think if, if the focus is on the curriculum you clearly control.
Okay.
So that's why I do like the way, kind of going back and forth, dictating to staff what to, what to do for the curriculum on day one pending further, because the concerns I heard in the work session were about the time, inadequate time to study the DPI, you know, documents they just rolled out, and that the Board would like more public input and like to study it more themselves. So, you know, you, that's the Board exercising authority over your curriculum, we're not saying that the State Board doesn't have authority to promulgate the standards, just saying our curriculum is gonna be as follows for the time being. I don't know what more to say than that.
Well, the only other thing I'll say is, and I said this this morning, but if you read, you know, one thing that struck me on the K through eight standards or K through five standards was they were teaching people to make a difference, you know, be an activist, or teaching second graders, be an activist, how do you do change in your world? Well, as I said this morning, we as a Board, one new social study standard we're gonna implement is we're gonna make a stand to make a difference in our world, and that is telling the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction, if you wanted us to do stuff in a timely manner, then you're gonna get us the stuff that we need to do it in a timely manner. And if you're delayed, then too bad, we'll do it next year. So we are implementing that part of the social study standard, we're gonna stand up and we're gonna make a difference.
And, and when they, when they get their act together, we'll follow them. But until they get their act together, we have children to teach.
Being a little bit concerned about being a lawbreaker, since it is, our Board is charged with following the guidelines, the mandates, if you want to call them that, that come from our State Board and DPI. What is the latest time that this kind of decision could be made and not just totally wreak havoc upon our...
You're past it. I want to be real clear about that. We're, we're well past it.
Because we've already put so much time and effort.
Yeah, I, I think by now you know, we don't take summers off, we try to get our vacations in and stuff, but this is a busy time of year for us. If we're doing our jobs, summer is when we really are putting the time in in between when we get out of town, that's about it. And we only do that this time of year because we can't do it the rest of the year. So I think that we, we're, we're well past that. So I, I wanna, I wanna make sure that Ms. Gephardt and Dr. Metcalf and Dr. Locklear and Ms. Fay and the others get their due reward out of this. But, but we, we do need to know this sort of thing like now, okay? We really do, because when the teachers come back, we've gotta know what to tell them. They need to know what their lesson plans are gonna be.
Understood that. And I heartily agree, as a former teacher, you don't want to get it the day you're walking in. So that, that helps me make up my mind, because I have ultimate faith in our teachers and our curriculum planners. And if they have taken these new standards and created a curriculum that follows the guidelines that we have put to them, especially ones passed tonight, then they will be teaching the curriculum that we want them to teach in the fall, regardless of what comes out of Raleigh. And so I have faith in them for that matter. Now, does Raleigh need to learn that they can't be dragging us all over the place? Yes, they do, but I don't think that sacrificing our students in their history classes and the work that our teachers have already done is necessarily the way to do it. We may have to go up and pin ourselves to the door of the, the building on, is it Salisbury Street, Alm, whatever, Almall Building, wherever DPI is, and, and let them know that they can't just run over us in this way over and over and over again. But I have faith in the curriculums that have been completed this summer, so I would, I would feel good about going ahead with them, because I don't think we're gonna have teachers doing the things that they're being accused of doing.
And I would point out that what the, the work that they have done is not in vain because the work that they have done so far can be utilized later on, but what we're doing is we're teaching kids on the run. We don't even know what we're going to teach them. The DPI doesn't know what their, what their, their six through twelve, six through twelve, I guess, standards are going, their six through twelve, unpacking documents are going to be. We haven't, we, we haven't given our teachers professional development, much, much less they haven't completed their, their, their pacing guides for six through twelve. This is no way to, this is no way to run a railroad, and we've got to say, no, we know what last year's standards were and what last year's curriculum was. Let's do last year's curriculum, last year's standards, and when DPI gets its act together, whenever that's going to be, then we'll bring ourselves along. But our kids are not guinea pigs for DPI, and, and, and our kids, when, when DPI yells "Jump," we don't yell, "How high?" Okay? We have to say, "We represent the students of Moore County, and they need quality education." So I say, "Let's delay these standards for a year, and, and, and the kids will get that quality education."
Other, other comments, questions, questions for...
They have worked on it, though, right? Six through twelve, okay.
Yes, ma'am, they have. Remember, we talked about the unpacking documents were supplemental. Our teachers typically only look at those just to consult, to make sure that they've gotten everything that they need to have. So they, we actually have six through twelve pacing and curriculum unit guides.
And I might, and I might add that those things aren't even gonna be front-facing so that our parents can take a look at them until after we've started teaching them. So, so, you know, we're, we're, we're saying to our parents, "Well, we'll let you know what's in the bill after we pass the bill." And that's essentially what we're doing. This is no way to treat our parents.
I hate to say it, but it's always been that way. I mean, I think about the math curriculum that they sprung on us in July, and I had to learn it by August, and parents didn't get any say in that math curriculum.
Well, you know, it's always been that way, but darn it, you know? Let's, let's change things.
I get it, I get it, but it's, it's the way of how it always is.
You know, let's not, let's not bow down to the, to the Lords in Raleigh. Let's say that we control our curriculum, and we, and we're going to give these kids and the parents the respect that they're due.
But I think that you just made the point, we do control our curriculum, and that curriculum has been developed in the course of the summer workshops, so we can have faith in this curriculum we developed.
So, so long as our curriculum obeys their, obeys what they're telling us to do, but by the way, they haven't figured out what they're telling us to do yet.
They're not telling us anything to do.
Well, then if they're not telling us anything to do, then let's delay the standards.
Well, they're saying...
It would be helpful to staff...
Of course they're, of course they're telling us what to do.
It would be helpful for staff if we could take the vote before the end of July. If I could, just, just remember, they've been working on the new standards.
Yeah.
Okay, so the work they've done is on the new standards. They've not been refining the old ones, the time has been invested. Now, that's not wasted time, because you all asked me ahead of time, wouldn't that be wasted time? No, we, we've got that work in the bank, just in case the State says, "You've gotta do the new standards." This could delay the front-facing curriculum, because we've been working on the new standard curriculum, being the one that's front-facing. So you may have to give us a little bit of, the community might have to be a little bit patient with us, we might need some extra time to do that, or we still want to do that, but now if we're gonna change the curriculum, we can't, you can't be changing this every month on us and, 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 you know, gotta jump around. So if we can make a decision and stick with it, the, the Board will just direct us to use the local curriculum. If the State Board has any questions about it, they can take that up with me and the, and the local Board and leave our teachers and principals out of that. I, I think that would be, that would go a long way with our teachers to just give them some comfort that, that they're gonna be able to teach something that's not gonna keep them in the middle of the culture wars here. The last piece is just that the course sequence in high school, I think the resolution covers both areas. And so I do, under these circumstances, I, I do offer my recommendation for approval on that, as presented by Mr. Levy.
Approval and...
The regular report that...
His motion, his motion. I, I am recommending approval of that.
To delay it.
Yeah, his motion.
All right, Ms. Thompson has called the question. Can I restate the motion? I'm not sure that I can, but it is...
There have been several formulations, yeah, I think that's it, and it's, they're, they're somewhat different. Mr. Levy, is your, is your motion to delay the, to...
To delay the implementation of the standards for K through six?
No, you can't, it's not standards, it's, can I take a stab at this?
To use the existing curriculum for K through five and implement the new standards, or K through whatever, and then implement, K through eight, and then use the new, implement the new standards for nine through twelve.
Or just the course sequence.
Just, just the course, just the course sequence, not the new standards.
That'll give our teachers the flexibility they need to adapt what they need to do to make the course sequence work.
So, yeah, because as I mentioned before, then the Board is giving instructions to staff on the curricular materials that are totally within your control, at least arguably. So it, I think that's a little bit better positioned than, than sort of, I mean, you've already got your, your demands and requests, and urgent requests to Raleigh to delay implementation of the standards, you're on record of that. I believe there's still legislation pending, Ed may know, to that effect, so we'll see, so we'll see if that, if that pans out. But this, this way, you're just directing staff on the...
So we're not saying we're gonna delay, we're just saying, staff, this is gonna use the old...
Use last year's curriculum except for the course sequencing.
And I'm recommending Mr. Hensley's interpretation, which is what Mr. Levy said a little while ago.
Yes, that's correct.
He forgot what he said, so let's vote before he forgets again.
And I go along, and I go along with what the Superintendent, Mr. Hensley, said.
Very good.
All right, so the motion was Mr. Levy's and the second was Mr. Hensley's with this motion. So Ms. Thompson has called the question. Do I need to try and restate the motion?
No, no, please, no.
Everybody knows what it is, okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 I think that was five, I believe. Raise your hand, please. Four. All those opposed? Okay, the motion carries four three. All right, Dr. Grimacy, you don't get to give a report, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
No matter, no matter what you wanted to say. We then go to Board comments and, do we have to? Would you like to move that we omit what comments tonight?
Why don't you, why don't you, why don't you, why don't you make me first?
Oh, no.
I'm gonna give you, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you guys a present.
Okay, go, Mr. Levy.
Okay, I'd like to, like to thank the staff for, for, for doing a yeoman's job today, and that is all I have to say.
You can move to adjourn.
Oh, I, I would, I would move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
No other comments.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
We're done. Thank you.